Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Chambers of the Portland City Council. We're glad that you're here. Today is Wednesday, December 5th, 2012. It's 9:30 a.m. session. Good morning, Carla.
Good morning.
How are you?
I'm good, thank you.
It was chilly out there.
Yes, it was.
Can you please call the vote, uh, call the roll?
Leonard Fritz.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Saltzman.
Here.
Adams.
Here. Rules of the chamber are no noise, no talking, no clapping. If you like something, you can put your thumb up. If you don't, you can put your thumb down. You have to speak to the agenda item, the topic of the agenda item in front of you unless you've signed up for one of the five slots for communications in which you have three minutes to talk about whatever you want. And we, our job is to sit here and listen politely. Under local law, if you are a lobbyist or authorized to speak on behalf of somebody else in addition to giving us your first and last name only, if you're a lobbyist as you begin speaking, you also need to declare who you are representing or who you are a lobbyist on behalf of. If you don't make such a declaration, then we're assuming you're here to just speak for yourself. And with that, we will begin with communications. We have four signed up. Can you please read the title for item number 1361?
Request of Mary Eng to address council regarding homeless persons experience post-traumatic stress disorder.
Hi, I read in a neuroscience journal publishing the abstract regarding recent research in post-traumatic stress disorder, and I'm very thrilled that the Department of Justice is cracking down on our racist police brutality here in Portland, but I wanted to address the issues of how violence and violent impact affects homeless people specifically, but all persons in general. I'd also like to notify you that I've alerted the Department of Justice Office on Violence Against Women of the Portland State University Rape Crisis. And with our poverty crisis and our homeless crisis at the level that it is, we can find that students are facing a lifetime of post-traumatic stress disorder in response to the safety crises and rape crises. I previously talked about the unnecessary undue burden of sexual violence, sexual harassment, and violent assault that homeless women face on the streets. And I think it's very important to look at it from a scientific angle. I applaud the city government taking into consideration the concept of mental illness, but I think we need to get more scientific than that and realize that things as simple as a bottle of B vitamins will help reduce the buildup of toxic homocysteine in the brain that is often associated what was formerly known as schizophrenia. And if we follow our scientific research online with PubMed, we can find that assessing these toxicities in the brain that result from malnutrition and chronic stress with post-traumatic stress disorder can improve our understanding of how we can reach out to the community, help them repair their nutritional deficits, and help them deal with the long-term chronic stress they face when they face violence on the streets or they had maladaptive childhood experiences. So with that, the cortisol mechanism, to make this really simple and easy to understand, different people impact stress differently. Say, for instance, with military rape, some people will adapt to military rape better than others, but a low basal cortisol rate is associated with PTSD where the cortisol as a stress hormone will flood when a traumatic trigger comes back. So say, for instance, if you've witnessed police brutality, if you have another instance of police brutality in your city or in the news, that can actually cause a triggering effect. So when we're having these traumatic triggers of rape on Portland State University campus, violent assaults, or the kinds of basic fears that homeless people face when they sleep on the streets, and they're actually worried about losing their tennis shoes or getting hit over the head in the middle of the night, I hope you will take this into consideration and put energy towards investigating the scientific impact of post-traumatic stress disorder, what we can do to help our veterans, help our homeless people, and help our survivors of sexual assault and all other traumatic incidences. And I thank you so much for your compassion on these issues.
Carla, can you please read the title for communications item number 1362?
Request of Lightning to address council regarding creative solutions for homeless.
Creating solutions for the homeless. The reality is, if you want the city of Portland to become a better place to live, we must create solutions that improve the lives of the homeless. When we, the people of the city, see more homeless sleeping on sidewalks or under bridges or various outside locations, we must take action. Portland should not only be known as, the phrase, "a city that works," but also known as a city that cares for their homeless. When we show we care for our homeless, our city then actually does work. We have some of the best organizations in the city that do everything possible for the homeless but still need our assistance. Just to name a few of these organizations, Blanche House, Transition Projects Bud Clark Commons, St. Michael Church, Salvation Army, Portland Rescue Mission, Join, Central City Concern, Union Gospel, R2, D2, Indignity Village. The efforts these organizations have made toward improving the city and the lives of the homeless is truly amazing. Their continued success is also dependent upon the support of the community. It is imperative that donations are sent to them on a consistent and regular basis. The city of Portland must continue to improve the overall health of the homeless. It is imperative that they have the proper equipment to be able to stay warm at night. A possibility to be able to accomplish this might be to create some modifications to the current camping ban, which can be discussed at a later date. From mental illness to being in a mental crisis to drug addictions, just to name a few, it's imperative we continue to create ways to improve the overall health of the homeless. I applaud the efforts of the Department of Justice for putting into action creative ideas that will create historic positive change throughout the city. My final statement, Portland, a city that cares for the homeless, is a city that works. Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Can you please read the title to communications item number 1363?
Request of Robert Bernstein to address council regarding Hayden Island. He is not able to make it today.
Okay, so can you please read the title for 1364?
Request of Donna Cohen to address council regarding public involvement at city events specifically arranged for public input.
Welcome.
Hello. Changes to transform the Fessenden's.
Sorry, I just need to get you to give us your name again.
Oh, I'm sorry. Donna Cohen, St. John's. Changes to transform the Fessenden-St. Louis corridor in St. John's from an ad hoc truck route to a neighborhood street appear to be on track. This corridor has separated thousands of people, primarily kids, seniors, and disabled, from the St. John's downtown core. Over the past year and a half, and with assistance of mediation between neighbors and PBOB staff, thank you, Amanda, for helping us on that, the committee is to present a close-to-complete plan to the community at an open house on December 12th. The community needs assistance from city council on two issues. One, enforcement. The West Hayden Island Health Report discusses the negative impact of trucks in a residential area. Add in our large vulnerable population, and it is clear that through trucks must go. Unfortunately, PBOB staff have only ever supported, quote, "mitigation" of the through trucks, but we do finally have no through truck signs at each end of the corridor, and we ask that you direct the police bureau to enforce the law. Based on pre-signs data, only half of 1% of freight trucks in the corridor are local. Recent statements by PBOB staff that police will begin to pull over, quote, "trucks suspected of being non-local" is not satisfactory. We know from a survey of businesses that there are only two to three local freight deliveries per day. Police can assume a freight truck is very likely non-local. St. John's residents need a firm commitment about enforcement. Two, an adequate community open house on December 12th. The community needs to be sufficiently informed about the plan and have a chance to ask questions. Our only other community meeting was November 2011, attended by about 75 people. This time, we expect more. The PBOB plan for next week is to have visual aids and for staff to talk with people individually. Although this approach is sufficient for part of the meeting, a plan which took a year and a half to develop and which is being presented to potentially 100, 150 people requires that a portion of the meeting be a group presentation Q&amp;A session. As a former teacher, this is a no-brainer. Not providing a presentation will not allow the best possible outcomes for the meeting. Several of the neighbors on the committee have stressed to PBOB staff more than once the necessity for a presentation. St. John's needs and deserves an open group discussion Q&amp;A of the plan. For PBOB staff to avoid doing so reflects disrespect on a community which has been ill-served by the city in the past in regard to the issue at hand. At the first open house in November 2011, having been in close proximity to the speakers after the presentation, myself, I heard personal discomfort expressed about the experience, and it appeared to me that then and there, a decision not to have a presentation at subsequent community meetings was made. I ask all of you to remind PBOB staff of their professional obligation to serve the community, which in the case of December 12th means providing a group presentation during which the proposed plan is reviewed, input is solicited, and questions are taken. Thank you very much.
Thanks. I'll make sure they do a Q&amp;A session.
Thank you.
All right, that gets us to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any items to pull from the consent agenda? All right.
We have a request for 1390 to be pulled.
1390?
Yes.
All right. Can you please read that title, and we'll hear it at the end of our session.
Certify abstract of votes cast, proclaim candidates elected, and measures approved at the municipal nonpartisan general election held in the city of Portland on November 6, 2012.
All right. Can you please call the vote on the consent agenda?
Leonard.
Aye.
Fritz.
Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Adams.
Aye. Consent agenda is approved. We have three times certants beginning with resolution. Can you please read the title, 1365?
Refer renewal of Portland's Children's Levy to city voters as a local option levy for five years commencing in fiscal year 2014-15.
Commissioner Dan Saltzman.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure to bring forward today a resolution to ask the council to refer to the voters in the May 2013, a renewal of the Children's Levy for an additional five years. Simply put, the Children's Levy is about giving every child in this city an equal shot at success. Since 2002, the Children's Levy has invested nearly $100 million in proven cost-effective programs to help Portland children. The levy is improving, excuse me, the lives of 14,000 Portland kids at any given time each year by investing in early childhood programs to ensure that kids arrive at kindergarten ready to learn, investing in child abuse prevention and intervention programs which help children to overcome the trauma of abuse and to prevent other children from having to experience abuse and neglect. No child will thrive in school if they are experiencing abuse at home. By investing in after-school and mentoring programs which motivate kids to stay in class, attain better grades, and to keep them safe after school, by investing in programs to help foster children overcome the daunting odds they face and help them provide, help provide them with a path to success now and in the future. We have kept our commitment to voters to have annual audits, citizen oversight, and to cap administrative expenses at 5%, meaning that 95 cents of every dollar is invested directly in the programs that are serving Portland children. In 2002, Portlanders decided to make children a higher priority by creating the Children's Levy. In 2008, Portlanders resoundingly approved continuing the levy. This May, we will ask voters to approve a five-year straight renewal of the levy, which I am hopeful they will support, recognizing the levy's solid 10-year track record of successfully investing in proven cost-effective programs that have helped the lives of tens of thousands of children and families. In 2008, we responded to the needs of our community by adding a focus on investing in programs that will help children in foster care succeed. We saw the daunting statistics that foster care, children in foster care face to being successful, and we wanted to do something about that, and we did. This renewal will respond to the needs of our community by adding a focus on hunger, recognizing the devastating effects of the prolonged economic downturn and what it, and the impacts it is having on our children. As we know, hunger has devastating effects on children. Studies have shown hungry children have lower school achievement, increased school absenteeism, they have an impaired ability to think, increased behavioral problems, and are more likely to repeat a grade. As we heard in an Oregon Food Bank presentation earlier this year brought forward by my colleague Randy Leonard, 14,000 Portland children are relying on emergency food boxes each month. We need to do something about this. By adding hunger prevention as a focus of the Children's Levy, we will invest in cost-effective solutions to address hunger, child hunger, including the potential of serving and possibly even delivering hot meals to children to ensure that we are providing them food when they need it the most. When children are in school, they may receive a breakfast and a lunch, but when they get home, many don't know if they'll have a hot nutritious meal. We will look at partnering with proven programs, such as Meals on Wheels, to expand our capabilities to provide innovative solutions to child hunger. With that, I would like to first call up County Chair, Commissioner, County Chair Jeff Cogan, who has another appointment he must get to, and then I will call up our program director Lisa Pellegrino, along with Police Chief Mike Reese. So, Chair Cogan.
Thank you, Commissioner Saltzman. Good morning, Mayor Adams, members of council. I'm Jeff Cogan, Multnomah County Chair, and I'm very happy to be here this morning to, first of all, thank you for all that you have done as a council to help children in our community and to encourage you to continue those actions by referring today the renewal of the Portland Children's Levy. As many of you know, 10 years ago, I was on Commissioner Saltzman's staff when the original Children's Levy proposal was being developed, and at that point, we really hoped that by taking this action, we'd be able to make a real difference in the lives of children in Portland, and we'd really be able to help in a way that would help children succeed who otherwise might not. At the time that this was first proposed, there were certainly some voices that said, "This isn't the city's job." And city council wisely didn't listen to those voices because that council, as this council knows, that you can't have a healthy and vital city without healthy and vital children. And so that council acted to refer, and the voters wisely created the Portland Children's Levy, and it has exceeded beyond our initial wildest expectations. As Commissioner Saltzman just said, 14,000 kids today are being served by programs from this levy, and they really, really work. I mean, one of the things that was really unique about the Children's Levy when it was first formulated was that it was going to only invest in programs that could prove they worked. And that sounds kind of simple, like you would think, gee, gosh, government must only always do that, but in fact, it's not the case that we only ever invest in programs that are proven to work. We've moved in that direction since the Children's Levy, but often in case, programs have been funded just because they've been funded in the past. And the rigor that is required to ensure that we're making programs that have evidence that shows they make a difference is one of the reasons that if you look at what's happened since the Children's Levy's been in place for 10 years, there are tens of thousands of kids who are doing better, who have a better chance of succeeding in life because of the investments that have been made possible by this council. For me personally, it was really a life-altering experience to go out and visit kids in Head Start or visit kids at programs like SEI and Friends of the Children and know and see that they were being served in a way that was changing their lives and that it wouldn't have happened but for the Portland Children's Levy. It was extremely empowering for me personally to see the actions that local government can take can really change lives and change the future of our community, but more importantly, it really changed lives and changed the future of our community. And as I'm sitting here today as the Chair of the Multnomah County Commission, Multnomah County is the other major provider in this community of services for children, and we partner greatly with and rely heavily on the Portland Children's Levy. And that's true in terms of how we think about service provision, staffs work closely with staff to coordinate and partner, but it's also many ways in which Multnomah County has worked to learn from the Children's Levy. Some of the things that Commissioner Saltzman just mentioned, for example, requiring investments in programs that are proven to work, has helped us realize that we needed to step up our game and work harder to demand outcomes and work harder to make sure that the investments we were making were actually giving us the results we wanted. And similarly, the really path-breaking limitation on administrative expenses, the fact that 95% of these dollars are out in the field, has caused us to do a lot of internal searching and changing and improvement to increase our administrative efficiency because at the end of the day, what really matters is getting these dollars out to serve kids in our community. And so I want to just acknowledge that the impact of the Children's Levy is very great just in terms of the children who are being served by the Children's Levy, but the impact is also great in terms of the role model, role that the Children's Levy plays in our community, influencing other governments, other services, other programs to try to be better, to try to be more efficient, to try to be more effective. I think this is really a wonderful program. I thank you for all that you've done in the past, and I encourage you to give the people of Portland a chance to step up again and help kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair Cogan. Thank you, Chair.
Now, I'd like to bring up the, our levy director, Lisa Pellegrino, and Police Chief Mike Reese. Lisa will give us a short PowerPoint, and then we'll hear from Chief Reese. You gotta push the button at the base of the microphone there, too.
Thank you. Pardon me, I have a little bit of a cold. I'll try not to cough. Good morning, City Council, and I'm going to just briefly give you an outline of the Children's Levy. I know many of you are familiar with some of these facts, but we'll take a quick tour through. So as Commissioner Saltzman mentioned, the city voters first passed the Children's Levy in 2002, and it was overwhelmingly renewed in 2008 by more than 70% of the voters. Over the course of the two levies, we've invested $100 million in children's programs in the city of Portland. Some of the accountability measures which have been highlighted by Chair Cogan and also by Commissioner Saltzman are as follows. We are annually audited. We spend only 5% of our revenues on administering the fund so that 95%, or 95 cents, rather, of every dollar goes to proven and cost-effective programs. We have also tried to create leverage funds which meant, which seek to get private dollars to match public dollars for children's programming and have leveraged over $6 million over the course of the two levies. As the staff, as the Director of the staff, we monitor all of the programs, site visit all the programs. Is this going in and out? It feels odd.
No, it's, it's on.
Okay. And we use a competitive process to select all grantees who receive funds from the levy. As also stated in the ballot measure, we have a public As also stated in the ballot measure, we have a, a public oversight body, the Allocation Committee, who makes all funding decisions. The folks that sit on that committee are a representative of City Council, which is Commissioner Saltzman, a representative of the Multnomah County Commission, which is Deborah Cofory, a city-approved citizen representative, which is Julie Young, who I believe is in the audience today, a county-appointed citizen representative as well, who is Adrienne Livingston, also the head of the Black United Fund, and the Portland Business Alliance also appoints a representative, which currently is Ron Belts. As stated by Commissioner Saltzman, the ballot measure sets forth that we invest in five, or in four different program areas: Early Childhood, After-School and Mentoring, Child Abuse Prevention and Intervention, and Foster Care. I'll briefly give you some highlights of some of the outcomes that we achieve for children and families through the programs that we fund. We, the families that participate in our programs report increased literacy and parenting skills. This is both in Early Childhood and Child Abuse Prevention Programs that do this type of service. The levy has decreased the cost of quality childcare for low-income parents through a childcare initiative that ran over five years' time. Students in the, in the school districts that are in the city of Portland have shown outcomes of improving school attendance, improving their attitude towards school, and exhibiting positive social behaviors, and higher self-confidence, and all of those are the precourse, or the precursor outcomes to improved academic performance. Parents annually receive 5,000 hours of respite care to help prevent abuse and neglect, which is, as Dan said, we're focusing on trying to prevent abuse and neglect happening in the first place, since such poor outcomes happen afterwards. Families in foster care programs show improved parenting skills and reduction in reported abuse. So this map just shows the spread of programming throughout Portland. So you can see it reached pretty much to all sectors of Portland. What's not shown on the map is that this doesn't include all of the childcare and preschools and family-centered sites that we serve, as well as we provide a lot of home-based services in early childhood, and clearly, we can't represent on the map. So it's, it's in even denser bubble map than what you see there. And last, this is just an example of the various programs that we fund, you can see on the screen, so it's a wide range of community-based programming that we provide in the community. So, thank you. That concludes my brief outline of the Children's Levy. I'll hand it over to Mike.
Chief Reese?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning, and I'm asking for your continued support for the Children's Levy. Too often, as police officers, we see the tragic outcomes for kids and families when there aren't healthy options for children. And the gang involvement, the kids living in poverty, the addiction, it is heartwarming to see what happens when you provide these kids with healthy opportunities. And the Children's Levy supports over 65 programs in our community that have a positive impact on kids and families. For our police officers, there are three programs in particular that really intersect with what we do. Boys and Girls Clubs of Portland, we have officers in the clubs. The Boys and Girls Club is next door to one of our police facilities. We have officers that volunteer there. They have after-school programs that meet the needs of kids in those communities funded by the Children's Levy. There are child abuse screenings at CARES Northwest, and these are kids that are referred by Portland police officers to that. And then at the Gateway Center, you'll see childcare for the children who come in, the, the parent may be meeting with a domestic violence advocate, and there's healthy options for the kids while that's going on. Again, I really support the Children's Levy and the continued good work that they do, and appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Our next panel is, will be Susan Stoltenberg, the Executive Director of Impact Northwest, along with a client served by one of the Children's Levy-backed programs, Jackie, and then Gerald Delany, is Gerald here? Of Self-Enhancement Inc., Program Director. I don't see Ger, oh, there is. Come on up, Gerald. And Deborah Hodges, a foster parent. So go ahead and just have those seats, and we'll start with you, Susan.
Okay, thank you. Susan Stoltenberg, Executive Director of Impact Northwest, a proud and privileged investee of the Children's Levy since its first years in all areas. I want to describe what you've done for us, and then I have a story that illustrates to me what the Children's Levy is to the children of Portland. In our early childhood and under your early childhood and school readiness objectives, you've been funding our parent-child development services that combines home visits, parent-child playgroups, and connections to essential community services, including enrollment in the Oregon Health Plan, access to SNAP funds, et cetera. We serve 80 to 100 children, over 1,000 children in the time, in the last 10 years. 77% of those children are children of color or speak Spanish as their first language, and 65% were at or below federal poverty levels. Under the after-school programs, the SUN, everyone knows SUN, and we provide SUN services through the Children's Levy at Whitman Elementary and Franklin, now Franklin High School. But without your support, we used to be at Marshall High School with these funds, and you graciously allowed us to help transition those students over to Franklin. We served, last year, we served 584 students between those two programs who attended regularly, over 2,600 family members who attended events and/or classes sporadically, and 133 students in summer school. What the outcomes were improved attendance by the students, improved engagement by the parents, and improved behavioral, or reduced behavioral demonstrations by the kids, negative behavior. So, we also provide AKA Science. At over 85 classes, 85 schools last year, we served over 1,000 students, and those students show an increased interest and knowledge in science concepts. That is a nine-week class. We also provide mentoring, and we have since the very beginning. We have, annually, we serve about 90 children. About 80% of our mentors have continued for more than one year. Our oldest mentoring group actually precedes the Children's Levy, but our oldest mentoring match has been going for 15 years. What do we see among children who've experienced mentoring? Again, increased involvement in school, increased attendance, and increased academic performance. Urban Opportunities is a program that you fund that works with high school students to increase their job skills, their career readiness, and again, increases, as a result of our intervention, increases their attendance and their academic performance, and their demonstrable skills in resume writing and job, on-the-job behavior. Our child abuse, and under your Child Abuse Prevention and Intervention Initiative, we have Listen to Kids, which provides the parent-child involvement program through the Gateway Center, and that is to nurture the parent-child relationship following the trauma of domestic violence back to health. And you've heard from Commissioner Saltzman, the long-term effects of the strength of that parent-child bond in terms of supporting a child in school readiness, school success, and life success. Under Foster Care, we serve, we have an initiative called Safe and Together that we do in partnership with Department of Human Services. It is also informed by another program you fund called TRAM through Portland State, which is, reflects the knowledge of trauma and uses trauma-informed services to help families who are, whose children are in foster care to reunite safely and permanently. Right now, we have a 90% of our parents report improved parenting skills and improved parent-child bond, and 100% of all reunified families have not experienced subsequent abuse. That is enormous success and long-lasting investment. Hunger, I really support the investment in the Hunger Initiative. Many of our sun sites, some of you may know that we have 10 sun sites in the metro region, hunger is a huge issue in all of our programs. Most of our sun sites provide two, sometimes three meals, I'll call it two meals and a snack a day, but even at that, we are not reaching, we may be reaching 20% of the families in a school that has 85% poverty. One of the recent initiatives is food pantries in most of our sun sites. We are eager to see how we can support families in nutrition, particularly in the evenings and on the weekends and long holidays. Finally, the story is, this morning, I was delivering my seven-year-old grandson to first grade, and all the way through kindergarten, he would tuck his hand deeply into mine and hold on tightly as I walked him all the way to the door. And this morning, he was asking what, you know, he's seven, so he's more mature, and he was saying, "So what are you doing today?" And I said, and I told him where I was headed, in seven-year, something seven-year-old could understand. And as I walked him to the door, he said, he released me his hand from mine and turned to me and said, "Oma, I have it from here. You go take care of those kids who need that money." And it really touched me, because I thought that certainly, Impact Northwest's mission is to help families prosper through a community of support. You are an invaluable cornerstone to that effort. Together, we are helping families, adults, children, hold, we hold tightly to their hand until it is time for them to turn to us and say, "I've got it from here. Thank you."
Thank you, Susan. Jackie, would you like to say a few words?
Hi, this is my family. I'm representing them.
Can you hold it up a little? Hold, there we go, okay.
There's my family. This was taken last Christmas at the Christmas dinner with, I just wanted to read from my journal. It's about TRAM, and of course, Impact Northwest. Dreams lightly distorted, puzzling them together, trying to make sense of it all. My mind is like a motor on the fritz lately. Have to write it down to get it all out. Class is surprisingly very intense. I go in, look at the topic of the day, and think to myself, "Oh, it's not so bad." Come out very emotional and more vulnerable than before. Is that what it's supposed to do? Am I supposed to feel so raw? I come out feeling more than I, more than when I arrived. More intense, more emotional, more like I am a tiny kid again. So open, so innocent, and yet, all the tools that I am learning is like a hand guiding me through my unknown forest, through my tunnels. I can at least feel the textures of it all. I can place my hands on the tunnel walls. I can see the wonders of what can be. I can see myself. I can see what my struggles are. I can see what makes me truly me. I am not alone. I can actually smile, laugh, enjoy the moments that was blessed to me. Through it all, I am grateful I have this class. I am thankful I, I'm sorry. I am thankful, thankful I was led to this class. It might take a lifetime to know all that I need to know, but the possibility of being able to know that I can is what I look forward to. If it was not for this class, I truly believe that I would not be where I am now. I believe I was spiraling to giving up and throwing in the towel. I was ready to give in to the temptations of my struggles. There is not a day that goes by that tempts me, but with the tools I have, I am strong with the tools I learned. I can say I am indestructible. I can be knocked down, but I will always stand back up. I may have a moment that breaks me down, but I have my super glue. I have my strength that will make me stand against the wind. I will smile. I will feel the power of life, and I am here. This is me, standing strong. And with TRAM, it gave me so much tools, positive tools. And with Portland Impact, they saved my family, because I see me. This is me. And thank you for supporting everything you guys do.
Thank you, Jackie. Great job.
That was really beautiful. Thank you.
Gerald?
Good morning. Mayor Adams, Commissioners, and especially Commissioner Saltzman for taking this personal and supporting this the way that he has done has been really big for the city, so I'd just like to commend you for doing that. Through the funds that we get from the Portland Children's Levy, we've been able to expand services we have. We do an after-school program for middle school kids, giving us the opportunity to bring in 116 more kids that are in most in need of this service. We're able to supplement those services with what we do at SEI, so that kids go through and get the after-school programming, which is homework assistance, academic enrichment, recreation and wellness, social and life skills, and also health. And we're able to supplement that, so many of those kids can actually go through the summer program that is not subsidized by anybody, that we can actually work with them to keep them in the center, because, summer, because our model is full year round. And we also serve kids on a continuum, so that's really important when we start talking about programs like foster care. We're able to serve 48 foster care kids and give them case management while we're in our program, and as we know about foster kids, many kids move from home to home to home. And when that happens, sometimes a program like ours is the only stability that their kids have. They know they can show up, they got a case manager that's there for them, you know, 24/7 case management, you can call them on the phone and they'll come for you. So you have, you know, that kind of service that kind of wraps around the kids that we have. We also do parent involvement slash child abuse prevention, where we screen a number of families that come through to home revives. We've actually seen 500 families. Now, we'll take those families that are at risk of, and case manage those families that are at risk of child abuse. So we look at a comprehensive program, bringing a whole lot of folks in. Sitting next to me is a good friend and a great foster parent, Deborah Hodges, and, you know, foster care is really dear to, near and dear to me because I was a foster parent at one time, so I know the struggles of foster care, and this is one of those true troopers that you have out there in the community. She takes the hardest cases, I'm not going to tell her story, but she takes the hardest ones. They have to say, "I got a girl, it's really tough. Ms. Hodges, come get her," and she doesn't say no.
Thank you. Good morning. I, my name is Deborah Hodges, and I am a foster parent with the state of Oregon. I've been a foster parent for over 10 years. And in my past experience with SEI and foster kids, they've used the computer lab, and as Mr. Delany has said, SEI is the one constant that I've had in some of the girls, I do girls, from 13 to 21, that is in their life. They keep those coordinators, and no matter where they move outside of the area, SEI has been the constant. So, most of my girls have been middle school, and as I shared earlier, they have advantage of coming to the center and using the computer lab, and it's been a real healthy environment for those girls to be, and I know that they're getting positive role models, and they're around kids their own age that they're growing with. But I want to tell you about my most recent experience with SEI and one of my children. I had a 16-year-old that came to me from a variety of placements, and she was one of those students that had been in SEI for a long period of time. And the thing with her is she wanted to go to college. She wasn't wanting to stop at high school. And the school she chose was Warner Pacific. She went for an Act VI scholarship. And I don't know how many of you know about this scholarship process, but it's real arduous, and it's very complicated. There's a lot of letters to write, there's a lot of people from the community that you have to pull in, in the scholarship. There's a lot of timelines, and with SEI and myself and this young person, we were able to meet all the deadlines. The SEI coordinator, I love him so much, his name was Troy Hollis, he kept her on task, because it was, it was, there were times when she would get defeated, because there's hundreds of students that applied for the scholarship, and they only take 10. So it was really hard for her, so he kept her motivated along with myself. Another thing that really gave me a lot of pleasure was another high school coordinator, Ms. Hickok. She always answered the phone. I mean, because I was a little nervous, too, trying to get her through and keep her motivated, so I needed help in doing what I needed to do, and she always answered the phone. So those two coordinators really helped this young girl get, there's three levels. She has just passed the second of three. So we're still in there, and, and... So we're still in there and praying and working hard that she makes it to the third level. But I couldn't have done it without SEI. I am a proud foster parent. And my job is to help these girls get to self-sufficiency, and I do it well and proudly through the help of SEI. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hodges.
Yeah, I'll just finish by saying those are the... The last time we testified, we brought two kids in that were foster kids that were going to college. We transitioned them straight into our post-high school program. They still have a coordinator. They do everything from sending them care packages, they check on how they're doing in school. Because kids stay in our program to age 25 because our final outcome, and I'll say no more after that, is we try to create positive contributing citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our third and final panel is Tom Kelly, president of Neil Kelly Design Build and board member of Meals on Wheels; John Stubenwald, advocacy director of the Oregon Food Bank; and Swati Adikar, executive director of the Children's Institute. Welcome. Start with you, Tom.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Tom Kelly. I'm the past board president, immediate past board president of the Meals on Wheels people and still currently a board member. Meals on Wheels people would like to express support for expanding the initiatives of the Children's Levy to include child nutrition. Although our main target is to feeding seniors, we have concern for any nutritionally at-risk population in our community. The mission of Meals on Wheels people is to enrich the lives of seniors, to assist them in maintaining independence by making nutritious foods, social contacts, and other resources easily accessible. Maintaining adequate nutrition is a key to success in any population at any age. In our program, we are finding a significant number of grandparents parenting grandchildren. We are experiencing a child nutrition need in our own services. We applaud Commissioner Dan Saltzman for taking steps to expand possible services to deal with this critical community issue. I have to say, when Commissioner Saltzman first called me about this, after I got off the phone, it was one of those kind of moments that's like, aha. I just went, wow, is this ever a neat idea? That wasn't in my prepared remarks. Meals on Wheels people is willing and interested in a possible partnership to address the growing nutritional risk of our children. Meals on Wheels people has expertise and experience in feeding the community. Our new central kitchen was built with community support and has the capacity to produce many more meals. The leaders of Meals on Wheels at the time that our center out in Milloma was built were very visionary, and we have a tremendous amount of unused capacity. And I think that's a strong point that I want to make, that we have the capacity to help in this project. We currently produce 1.2 million meals each year, and with the help of 10,000 volunteers, serve 17,000 individuals annually. We support the nutrition focus of the Children's Levy and look forward to helping and/or playing a role in a successful solution. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. John?
Good morning, Commissioners Saltzman and Commissioners. My name is John Stubenwald. I'm the director of advocacy for Oregon Food Bank. Thank you very much for bringing forward this resolution today. And obviously, Oregon Food Bank is very supportive of including childhood hunger in the renewal of this levy. We know that in Portland, children are disproportionately impacted by hunger. Earlier this year, the Oregon Food Bank Network conducted a statewide research project involving about 4,500 families across the state, including 500 within the city of Portland. And based on what we heard in that research project, we know that, for example, about 34% of those eating from an emergency food box in Portland are children compared to children Portland's overall child population of less than 20%. And Commissioner Saltzman, as you said earlier in your remarks, that equates to about 14,000 children per month in Portland that eat from an emergency food box provided through the Food Bank Network. And it's too much. It's just too much. We also know, based on what folks have told us in our discussions with them, that families are forced to make really difficult choices in addressing hunger. And one of the things that folks told us in our survey project was that about 36% of those families with children have to make choices, including having their children eat less per meal or skip a meal entirely simply because there's not enough food in the household. And we also know that families face hunger not in isolation, that they face other challenges, including employment, including a range of cost struggles within the household. Probably not terribly surprising that folks who face hunger are low-income households. Based on what people told us, about 40% of households facing hunger and receiving emergency food live at or below 50% of the federal poverty line, which translates into $11,000 per year for a family of four. $11,000 per year for a family of four. And so when we consider the other cost drivers that we all face, fuel, housing, medical services, hunger is our... Food is often one of those things that becomes an expense that people can do without because there's not a bill collector for food. Because we know that families face these multiple challenges, we really want to compliment the Portland Children's Levy for being a multifaceted approach. This is precisely the kind of approach that's needed to get at long-term solutions to hunger. When we address the multiple challenges, including hunger, that families often face, we can begin to get a handle on a long-term solution to hunger. And we also firmly believe that it's this type of public-private sector partnership that's really embodied in the levy that, again, will forge long-term solutions. Oregon Food Bank is deeply, deeply grateful for the leadership and support that's been shown by this great city, and we look forward to working with many folks in this room in the weeks and months ahead to further address childhood hunger in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Swati?
Good morning.
Press the button at the base there.
Good morning. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak to you today. I'm Swati Adikar, president of the Children's Institute. And I just want to take this time to applaud the incredible leadership and foresight you've had to create a Children's Levy in the first place. There isn't a better payoff in long-run investments for the city of Portland in ensuring our kids are going to be successful as students and as capable adults. As the president of the Children's Institute, I have a chance to focus on what the most effective strategies are to ensure children are school-ready and on grade level by third grade, which, as we know, is the best predictor of whether or not children are going to graduate from high school. And at a time in Oregon and in Portland where we have an incredibly high high school dropout rate, you can be assured that the Children's Levy is truly a beacon of hope and a bright spot for creating results and investing in the high-quality early learning programs that we know are going to get children prepared for school. I've had the chance to visit several of the programs that you're investing in over the years, and I can assure you that you are getting strong results and making a difference in the community. Moreover, we know that to reach the scale and magnitude of the problem we have, it's important that we look at a combination of federal, state, local funding streams, as well as philanthropic dollars. And through your leadership, you're ensuring this happens. I get a chance to travel all over the country and look at similar efforts, and I can tell you Portland's at the forefront because very few cities have a levy like this. And in addition to the incredible track record we have in making these important investments, you have put in place a rigorous and accountability system that allows us to have a high level of confidence on the rate of return on these investments we're making for the city. And so we know, as it's referred to the voters, if you take this step, you've got a solid record behind you and an opportunity for Portlanders to continue on this journey to make sure every child is on a level playing field in this city and can make a difference in their lives and all of ours in the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Swati. Thank you all. That concludes our invited testimony. Carla, do we have any public testimony?
Oh, we do. We have five people signed up.
Okay. What you call?
The first four, please come up, are Teri Sorensen, Ken Thrasher, Mike Radway, and
Welcome.
Morning.
Alma and Sante, come on up. Why don't we start with Alma? And if you could just give us your name and...
I came to help with interpretations.
Can you close that laptop so we can see Sante's face? Great. You just give us your name.
Good morning. My name is Alma.
Good morning. My name is Alma Mora. I'll just give a quick introduction in English. Alma Mora is a volunteer and a former participant in an early childhood program supported by Children's Levy called Juntos Aprendemos, Together We Learn, with the Organization Latino Network. And she's here with a spontaneous invitation from Commissioner Saltzman to bring her child, Santi, up and to share a few words as a community perspective.
Bueno, yo el programa Juntos Aprendemos tengo tres años de experiencia sobre ese programa.
I have three years' experience in the program Juntos Aprendemos.
Uno de mis niños más grandes fue dos años a ese programa y él salió muy avanzado y él no hizo gestar solamente ese programa y de ahí fue al kinder muy avanzado.
One of my sons started the program and attended for two years. And although he wasn't a participant in Head Start, he entered kindergarten very advanced.
Ahorita mi niño Santiago, él empezó a ir en octubre. Él ya todo el tiempo está contando, sabe... le gusta cantar. Ha aprendido ya a agarrar un lápiz.
My son Santiago, while he's just two and a half, started the program in October, and he's already developing school readiness skills, like using a pencil, learning songs.
Es muy buen programa para los niños pequeños, aparte de la experiencia de las maestras también, que los ayudan mucho.
It's a great program for the children, and I'm very appreciative of the teachers who help so much. All right. And then she feels like she's done, and I would just like to say by way of introduction that Alma has returned to volunteer with the program and exemplifies the strong community base of Juntos Aprendemos. So thank you all so much.
Thank you. And thank you, Alma and Santi. Great. Michael?
Good morning. My name is Mike Radway. I live in Portland, and I work for Knowledge Universe and Kinder Care Learning Centers. Knowledge Universe is the nation's largest private provider of early childhood education. We're actually also the largest private provider of early childhood education in the world. We're headquartered here in Portland, where we have about 600 employees in the Lloyd District. I want to thank Mayor Adams and Commissioner Fritz. You attended the groundbreaking of our most recently opened early childhood center and built in partnership with OHSU down in the South Waterfront. That center is now bustling with children and hopefully making that neighborhood a little bit more family-friendly. And also Commissioner Fish, who assisted us a couple of years ago as we did backpack distribution in cooperation with Schoolhouse Supplies as part of the back-to-school efforts here in Portland. I should make it clear that although Knowledge Universe is heavily involved in early childhood education around the country with 1,600 centers, we do not actually receive any funding from the Portland Children's Levy. As a private-for-profit, we're not eligible funding, but we nonetheless strongly support it. Some might wonder, well, why are you supporting it when potentially taxpayer funds are being used to support other providers? And the answer is really quite simple. The Portland Children's Levy is good for children, and it's good for the city of Portland. When you look at all of the research that's been done, both scientific research on early childhood and the development of children's brains, it's clear that the earlier that you invest in children, the much higher the rate of return is in terms of making them productive adults and helping them learn. Also, there have been numerous studies by economists, including Nobel laureates at the University of Chicago. James Heckman has a famous diagram that's referred to as the Heckman Curve that shows basically that the earlier you invest in children, the greater the return. And that's exactly what all the programs funded by the Children's Levy here in Portland do. So this is a tremendous advantage for all of the residents of our city that you can support here today, and I hope that you will. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Teri?
Hi, I'm Teri Sorensen, and I'm president of Friends of the Children. One in five children in our community are living in poverty, and one in 20 face multiple risk factors, things like parents who are incarcerated, foster care, abuse, neglect, and very early teen parents. Without early intervention and prevention, those children are likely to repeat those cycles. So Friends of the Children goes in and selects those children in kindergarten and provides them with a paid professional mentor for 12 and a half years, no matter what. 85% graduate from high school, 97% avoid juvenile justice, and 98% avoid teen parenting. We have been an investee of the Portland Children's Levy from the beginning, and because of the dollars, we've been able to double the number of children served since the inception. We've been able to expand from not just selecting kids in Portland Public, but out in David Douglas and Reynolds, which are really high-needs areas in Portland. So we are so grateful that you're considering putting us on the May ballot and appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Could you tell me about what is the cost of the mentoring that you just described?
Sure. So it's a long-term investment, and it's a deep investment. 12 and a half years, four hours a week with every child. The cost is about $9,500 per child per year. We had Harvard Business Association of Oregon do a return on investment study of our model, and it showed for every dollar invested, the return on that investment was over $7.
Those statistics are very impressive. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Good morning. Mayor Adams, Commissioners, thank you first for what you have done to create this unique and wonderful levy. And Dan Saltzman, as Commissioner, you've done a wonderful job in the leadership of that. I thought a little bit, again, I want to support the levy being referred to the voters in May again. Can you just give us your name also?
Ken Thrasher. I'm on the board of the Friends of the Children, our mentors to Children's Institute and the Cradle to Career Council, so touch a lot of the parts. But I think as we look forward with that, I think we should also make sure we look at its adequacy in making sure it meets the needs of the programs and the communities we're serving. And I want to just piggyback a little bit on Teri's return on investment, the seven times. That return really is educational outcomes, reducing social costs, and better preparing our kids for the workplace. And let me give you a very specific example. I was just down at Oregon State teaching an entrepreneur's class, and I met with lunch with a young man named Kevin. Kevin is a person that came out of a foster home here in Portland. He went to De La Salle and graduated, and graduated from Friends of the Children's Program. Kevin is going to be a much greater return on investment than seven to one because of where he is today, because of the support of the children's investment dollars and the support he's gotten in the community with foster parenting, et cetera. There's the compound effect. And connecting the dots with early childhood investments, reducing fade-out, those are the things that we are doing here that are being done in a lot of places, and I applaud this measure's ability to start focusing on how we connect those dots. The other thing I wanted to mention is part of the things we're also seeing as benefits and outcomes that you probably don't even hear about. Part of the Harvard study we're doing today is looking at the impact on health outcomes, on the impact on the family, on siblings, in the classroom. Those are other impacts that are very positive from this investment. So your investment... So your investment is a compound investment that touch a lot of things. So when you think about leverage and how these dollars are being leveraged, that's, I think, the critical consideration. These dollars are leveraging the ability of our programs to go out and also partner with other key strategies like the Creston Dell program, like College Possible. And other programs that we can provide wraparound services and better utilize the dollars you're investing to leverage those other investments to create that whole process, connected strategy that Cradle to Career is all about. So again, I want to thank you for all you have done and appreciate your time today to allow us to give the message. Bottom line, the investment our community is making, the Portland Children's Levy, is the highest return on investment I think you will find almost anywhere in the city.
Thank you all. Thank you, Sante. Was there one other person?
One more. Kim Philla.
Anybody else wish to testify?
Good morning, City Council. My name's Kim Philla. I'm the Director of Community Programs and Family Outreach at Portland OIC. At POIC, we've had the mentoring program for the past four years. Every year, we've served about 45 youth annually. For the last two years, PCL also funded our after-school program. Our mentoring program has positively impacted our students who are at risk of dropping out of high school, keeping them in school and moving them towards high school graduation, college career exposure, and creating a culture that we care. Our students matched with mentors do better academically, are more connected to school, and have improved sense of hope. Funding through the PCL will continue to positively impact our youth in our community. I really want to thank PCL for all that they've done and all the connectedness and the support they've given to our team. Thank you.
Okay, that completes the hearing.
All right. Is there discussion from council? Carla?
Mayor, I have one question.
Yep.
We've reviewed this with Dan before. We've had a chance in this hearing today to hear a lot from mission-driven nonprofits that are addressing children's needs in our community and some additional groups that are addressing hunger from the nonprofit side. Very important work. The city and the county also have existing programs which serve hungry children. And very simply, my question is, in the way that this new program will be structured, assuming Multnomah County or the city meet the criteria, are they eligible to seek funding to expand existing programs to serve hungry children?
Yes. There is no, I mean, the Children's Levy criteria is to invest in proven and effective programs. So if it's a government-funded program or a nonprofit-funded program, those are all eligible to apply for the funding as we develop the criteria around eradicating child hunger. So the short answer is yes.
Thank you, Dan.
All right. Carla, can you please call the vote on the resolution?
Leonard?
Well, there is no doubt that this has been one of the most effective uses of public dollars in helping children in the state of Oregon since Dan first initiated this program in 2002. Although we've heard nothing but resounding compliments today, I think it's probably important for people to understand that in 2002, not everybody on the council, including the mayor, thought this was the greatest idea. And...
Different mayor.
Different mayor.
Clear about that. The mayor that was the mayor in 2002 was obviously not Mayor Adams. And Dan steadfastly fought to bring this forward, fought to get it passed, and the results we've heard here today with a history of 10 years of really good work and really effective work. So thank you, Dan, for your leadership on this, and I'm really pleased to vote aye.
Fritz?
Thank you, Commissioner Salzman, for your leadership on this, for the partnership with the county, and for everyone who's here, who's part of an advocacy and helping organization. It's really great work being done. And thanks to the taxpayers of Portland, who are generous and who recognize that these are important programs, that paying upfront for early childhood programs benefits in the long run, and we heard that evidence today. It is still true that this is probably not a city of Portland problem, and it's not, it's a city of Portland's solution for a problem which is statewide. And the state of Oregon needs to figure out how we're going, what we want to pay for and how we're going to pay for it, because there are hungry children in Beaverton and Gresham, as well as in the city of Portland, and there are children in need all over our state. And we need to provide the services that nonprofits and others cannot do by themselves. And so I think that that's part of a conversation that we all have to have with the legislature. I was encouraged to read the article in the paper today about looking at property taxes, and we had a discussion on that yesterday in the Legislative Agenda Setting Work Session with the new council. We can't, we have to keep doing this levy, and I'm very proud to support referring it. Again, I hope the voters will approve it because the state has not stepped up to its responsibilities. We all need to work harder to make sure that that responsibility is met for everybody because then we can continue to target our resources to those particularly in need. Thank you, Commissioner Salzman, for your continued leadership. Aye.
Fish?
Dan, thanks for your great work on this and for an outstanding presentation. It's a national disgrace that so many children are living in poverty. And a child that doesn't have a stable home, doesn't enjoy at least one loving, caring adult in his or her life, is going to a struggling school, isn't getting a balanced diet and a healthy meal, is not going to have a successful life. And it is incumbent on all of us to remedy that. And one of the things I like, I really like about the levy is the focus on upstream investments. Too much of government is focused on dealing with the crisis after it's occurred, and we all see it coming. But the smart investments are upstream, and they're in prevention, and investments early on. And I think that's one of the great features of the levy and the way it's been administered. So congratulations to you, you and your team. Thanks to everybody who took time today to share your story, and I'm pleased to vote aye.
Salzman?
Well, I want to thank my colleagues for their support, once again, for asking voters to renew this levy in the May election for five more years. As I said at the outset, at its most fundamental level, the Children's Levy is about giving every kid in Portland, every child in Portland, an equal shot at success, and doing so through proven, cost-effective investments. So I also want to thank the many organizations that we invest in because they are the front lines that actually change the lives of the kids that we invest in. So thank you to all of you for your hard work, and I know we've gone through pain together. But I want to, you know, celebrate your success too in changing and improving the lives of some 14,000 kids at any given time. I also want to acknowledge Julie Young, who is one of the members of the allocation, five-person allocation committee. She is here in the audience. Julie, maybe just raise your hand. Thank you. And I will assure my colleagues and everybody listening that we will work very hard to, once again, make sure voters know about the Children's Levy, understand the good value it represents for their tax dollars, and we will work hard to gain their approval in the May 21st, 2013 election. So thank you, and I'm pleased to vote aye.
Adams?
Well, this mayor is very enthusiastic in his support of CHIF, and I want to thank Commissioner Salzman for your great leadership on this. Obviously heartfelt on your part, but very smart in its implementation. And to all of you that leverage these precious resources, it looks like there's going to be some tough, continued tough sledding financially on the federal and state level and for local governments across the nation. So your continued great work in taking these resources and leveraging them and partnering with others to the CHIF team, thanks for your great work as well. Pleased to vote aye. So approved. We'll take a three-minute break so folks that are with Rose Festival can come down, and those that need to leave can leave.
All right, so this.
There we go. Can you please read the title? It's a report. It contained an item number 1366.
Report presented by the Portland Rose Festival Foundation on the 2012 Portland Rose Festival Economic Impact to the City of Portland.
Commissioner Randy Leonard.
Thank you, Mayor Adams and colleagues. I don't ask for a lot of presentations, haven't since I've been on council. But I asked before I left office that Jeff put together a presentation so we could bring council up to date as to the status of the Rose Festival in late 2012 and where it sits in the city's various activities and entertainment venues. And but first, I want to, I want to, I want to make sure the council understands how we got here. About, I think it was about five years ago, Jeff Curtis, the executive director of the Rose Festival, came to me as the liaison, I've been appointed by the last couple of mayors to be liaison to the Rose Festival, and gave me a very unsettling report about the state of the Rose Festival financially. And at that time, in that report, just to cut to the chase, it became clear to me that the Rose Festival, and it was clear to Jeff, was annually losing money and that they had gotten to the point that their reserve funds were precipitously low and that, in fact, in future events, they would need to draw, based on their historical performance, on those reserves even more. And there had been more than one night that I've gone home from here and tossed and turned and not slept, and that was one of them. Because being the political person that I am, as much as I love the Rose Festival, as, and being a lifelong Portlander, I've gone to Rose Festival's parades since shortly after my birth in 1952. I realized that the Rose Festival is either going to be dramatically reduced or, according to Jeff, even eliminated during my tenure as their liaison. And that was unsettling on a number of levels. Jeff and I began actively working together and going from having a relationship where I received reports, thanked him for his work, to some sometimes difficult meetings where he and I discussed really the nature of what the Rose Festival is and does, where it's located, how it spends its money, how we attract people to come to various Rose Festival events, who those people are, and what we can do to change, if you will, what is the perception amongst Portlanders or was at that time. The result has been, from then till now, we agreed that they should sell their building that was on McAdam, that it was a huge financial drain. It was out of sight and out of mind. Nobody knew where it was, including the liaison to the Rose Festival from the city council. And we decided to change all that. We decided to, instead of having the Rose Festival be this thing people think about in June of every year, to having a full-time, annual presence that people would constantly see and constantly interact with and constantly have part of the Portland backdrop. So we took a building that literally was the focus more of the police bureau than it was of the Parks Bureau in the waterfront park that was full of dry rot, that was dilapidated, that we couldn't keep renters in, that we couldn't get anybody to rent, and, 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 and reinvigorated it to its original 1948 grandeur when, when the world-renowned architect John Yon designed it as the Portland Visitor Center. And we branded it the Portland Rose Festival Association. Through the unbelievable generosity of Ramsey Signs, who owns the Portland Oregon Sign, previously known as the Made in Oregon Sign, they donated, contrary to some myths, they donated the, the, the rose that sits on top of it and installed it free of charge. They were so enthused by the idea of having this signature Portland event be in Portland's, on Portland's front porch, as it were. And, and that along with a number of other things that we did. I, I was fortunate enough to have Sam Adams be the mayor. The Rose Festival is being killed every year by permit fees, by fees from the police bureau, by restrictions on where they could or could not do things. So some of the issues that Jeff and I discussed were the Rose Festival's own making. Others were circumstances that the city created that were not of their making, that were causing them to, to, to literally financially strangle to death. Mayor Adams has been a wonderful and supportive partner in, in, in reducing some of the permit fees, waiving other fees, having the police bureau be more cooperative with, with the Rose Festival, which has, which has freed up resources for them to invest in, in other activities. So to date, when most people thought of the Rose Festival five years ago, they thought maybe of the Rose Festival Parade, the Starlight Parade, the Starlight Run, and that was about it. And, and that was about it. Today, I have a calendar here for the upcoming year, for 2013, that lists exactly 62 Rose Festival-sponsored events. 62 events. And I'm not going to go through each one, but I'm, I'm going to name a few of them. The first is the Rose Festival Open House on April 7th, which is 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. down on the waterfront. I encourage anybody that's interested in the Rose Festival, go see their wonderful building and, and take advantage of that tour. On May 20th, we have the Rock and Roll Half Marathon, which has proved to be a challenge, certainly for us to organize, but Jeff did it.
And Commissioner Leonard has agreed to run.
No, he hasn't.
He will have time to train.
There's only so much training you can do on a 60-year-old body. The, and, but it's been, it's proven to be as challenging and it was fabulously, fabulously successful. On May 25th, we have the Grand Opening Celebration, which is about a week earlier than we used to do it, of the, of the, and fireworks down on the waterfront of, of the Rose Festival. Are we having Curtis Elgato again this year?
To be determined.
To be determined. So we're, we, we've had Curtis the last few years open for us. On June 2nd, we have the Rose City Sing-Off and, and to be followed by the Starlight Run and the Starlight Parade that night. On June 6th, we have the Fred Meyer Junior Parade, which is, I know Commissioner Fritz likes to walk in. I think one year I got a fire car to get you out.
Yes, you did.
You were late, and so I got a fire chief to respond.
That was my parade, I thought, junior parade.
It is your parade, and so I was.
Well, we rode together this year.
Last year we rode together, but the very first year, I wanted to be in it, and Commissioner Leonard asked one of his staff to help me. They weren't allowed to put the lights on, which I was very disappointed about.
I would have told them to. On June 9th, on June 9th is the Grand Floral Parade. On June 9th through 10th is the Dragon, Rose Festival Dragon Boat Races out on the river. Now, this one, I want to, I want to, I want to, I want to help Jeff a little bit with because on June 9th, there's also what he has entitled "The Rose Festival Drag Races." Now, in Portland, you have to be a little more specific than, than that because it conjures up a variety of images. So, now, this is actually in Woodburn, and it's at the drag strip. So next year, I'd recommend you say "Rose Festival Drag Car Racing." And then on August 3rd, we have the, the Rose Festival Foundation Golf Tournament, which is near and dear to my heart, that Jeff started, and they donate the proceeds of that, or partial proceeds of that, to the David Campbell Memorial Fund, which, which honors fallen firefighters. And then finally, on October 12th, is the Rock and Roses Dinner and Auction, in which they raise, they have a good time and raise a lot of money. I, I think it's also important, and Jeff is going to get much more in detail about this, but that the, the, the Rose Festival, which includes the 36 sanctioned events and then the other events that I mentioned here, generates an economic impact of over $75 million to the metropolitan area. And, and you're going to, to hear more about that, not just from Jeff, but of the, of the vendors who, and particularly Travel Portland, who are excited about that. So, for an example, the Grand Floral Parade all by itself today, or in 2012, generated $29,459,000. The Rock and Roll Half Marathon, $14,600,000. The Rose City Fair, $10,850,000. The Starlight Parade, $8,500,000. So, the, the Rose Festival is, I'm proud to say, alive and well, invigorated, has events that people of all ages now find entertaining and, and want to be a part of. And I couldn't be more proud than to turn this over to Jeff, who, in my view, has been the best director since I've been on council and, and probably even longer than that. Jeff?
Thank you, Commissioner, Mayor Adams, and fellow commissioners. My pleasure to be here today to, to culminate and ultimately say thank you. We've been on a journey over the last four or five years, and while we're going to introduce and talk about the economic impact, we're going to close today's presentation by giving you a real update of the financial status of the Portland Rose Festival Foundation, since that was the genesis for some of these difficult conversations that we had. And I'll tell you how it's going to end, ends with a big thank you. Thank you for what you've done. You've made some very significant decisions that have made a difference, that have made a difference, and I think a model for the future. So I'm going to specifically go into some highlights, specifically on the economic impact front. We have not done a formal economic impact study since 2001. While we knew that we were drawing economic activity, people are staying in hotels, we didn't have a comprehensive, independent study done. We did some updates in 2006. It was a product of funding, couldn't quite find the funding to do it. We ultimately made this a priority and commissioned the International Festival and Events Association, IFEA. They're a very, very well-respected organization with some 2,000 members worldwide that represent special events and advocacy for special events. They've created an economic impact model that we looked at and said, "That's the organization we will use to, to develop an economic impact study," using their industry-accepted models. We also use data from our friends with the competitor group, our partners with the inaugural Rock and Roll Portland Half Marathon. They use the School of Business at San Diego State University for collecting the genesis of the data ultimately to provide today. What we are announcing is a big deal. We were able to, we're publicly announcing $75.5 million return annually, based on the 2012 study that we conducted, that IFEA conducted. So some research, specifically getting into the report, this is still the high level of this, not to go into too much detail. The research is basically focused on one-on-one interviews with attendees at several of those Rose Festival events that Commissioner Leonard mentioned. They, we also conducted an electronic survey of the thousands of participants from the Rock and Roll Portland Half Marathon. And we researched vendor spending and festival-related employment, directly related to the Rose Festival activities. And last, we compiled direct spending from many large stakeholders, including ourselves, as we put dollars in by stages, tenting, all those things. Our competitor group, that's our partner with the Rock and Roll Half Marathon, Fantastic Shows, which is a Portland-based carnival company. Those are just three examples of data we use ultimately to collect and provide the comprehensive, comprehensive report that we have here today. So the results. This is where it really breaks down. Some things we learned. First of all, there's a dramatic increase from five years ago to hotel occupancy. And it's, it's apparent, it's dramatic, it's very real. Jeff and Lance will tell you a little more about that. The Rock and Roll Portland Half Marathon made a significant, dramatic increase in that. Over half our attendees live outside of Portland. They're coming here, they're staying, they're having restaurants, they're, they're actually coming. I say outside of Portland, outside of Portland metro area, and they're traveling here. That's part of their entertainment experience, and it's on their calendar, based on the research that we asked. And they're coming from all, all 50 states and several countries. The Rose Festival is a global festival. It has global significance. And the most important fact that we learned, which was the purpose of the study, is to compile and get an independent analysis of where we stand economically, $75.5 million annual economic impact, a significant return for the small event that we, the small amount of investment that we do to produce the festival. And I'll go into the economics in a little bit, but we're extremely, extremely excited about this, this result and something that we're very proud of. Randy mentioned a little bit of the breakdown. I won't go into detail specifically, event by event, but you can see how it breaks down with the Grand, from the Grand Floral Parade all the way down to the direct vendor spending, ultimately compiled to $75.5 million economic impact of the Portland Rose Festival activities. And our sources, a variety of them, mainly like I mentioned, the International Festival Events Association. They have a model out of Texas A&amp;M University School of Business. We're a source ourselves, providing them the necessary financial data. The competitor group from Rock and Roll and San Diego State University specifically. So there's some relevant other facts as we get into the economics that I thought just briefly share in addition to the economic impact this morning. Last year, we delivered $109,000 check to the Parks Bureau, which is revenue directly from purchase of merchandise, rose-laden merchandise of the Rose Garden Store. Very proud. We've seen that number grow through good management, good support, and our partnership with Parks. We also annually put a little bit of money into the Parks Registration, Park Restoration, which is something that we do normally, but it's significant. We, we tear up the park when we go down there. We, you know, that's an end result of, of special events. We put money back in directly to the Parks Bureau to help them reseed it. But on top of that, what's not listed here is we made a generous contribution of $100,000 for a much larger, comprehensive project, working with Commissioner Fish and his team, that will make the park suitable long-term for special events related to the SOT. And we pay an estimated pre, pre-support, which Mayor Adams has generously led, where some city fee relief, $255,000 annually, just in fees, generally speaking, to the Rose Festival, Parks fees, permit fees, things of that nature. So those are some economics related to what we do at the city. But specifically, the point that we're really excited about is what does this all mean? And that's what I would say the affirmations of this study. The affirmations of the study are several. We've listed six in our presentation today. You're, and all relate to how you've chosen to, to manage and look at the Rose Festival under Randy Leonard's leadership and Mayor Adams' strong support and all of you, because we've had some very honest discussions with all of you about this. But the official festival designation is relevant. It's relevant for the $75.5 million, what it does for the community. It makes sense. This is an affirmation of that, this study. It also answers the relevance question because I've had very honest conversations with all of you about staying relevant. If we're, if you're going to invest in the Rose Festival in any way, we've got to make sure we're serving our citizens, our community, and we're driving growth. And there's no better example of that than what we've done in the last four years. And I'll highlight the Rock and Roll Half Marathon as a brand-new event, with significant relevance to the organization. But we're also paying tribute to and respecting the traditions, like the Grand Floral Parade. That's a significant contributor to the economic formula, if you saw that. And it validates the return that you do support us with, the, the support of the police officers on the parade route. There's reasons for that. It validates that. Smart, smart reasons for support of the festival. And ultimately, I think it validates something else that we have not talked about in this session, that we should be part of Portland's strategic conversations. Special events matter economically and socially. I think this study puts that all into a great, significant package. Special events should be part of parks, streets, arts, conversations, and the Rose Festival is certainly part of that. And I congratulate Mayor Adams on the Portland Plan. I think that there's some things in there that can help, and I think the Rose Festival can be, play an even greater role in the strategic growth of this great city. And last, it embraces, the community's embracing this festival, and we're a festival of global significance. So those are, you know, if you look at the 60-page-plus report, this puts it in kind of a snapshot. But it's enough for me. I've asked some special guests to come and speak to you about the Rose Festival specifically, about this report. I'm going to start with Jeff Miller, the CEO of Travel Portland. Jeff?
Well, thank you, Mayor Adams, commissioners, Commissioner Leonard. I think you've come on an idea here. I think the Rose Festival has opportunity for two drag races, and I think we could get Darcelle to, to support this. I think you've hit something there.
I would come out of retirement for that. Maybe even as a participant.
I'll run too, if you will.
A deal.
That I got to see.
Well, I'm very excited to be here to talk about the Rose Festival and kind of give you the broad context of the way we think about it in tourism. You know, a city like Portland has many, many brands, and a brand is really what people say about you, not what you say about yourself. And the Rose Festival gets people to say really good things about us. You know, from the Grand Floral Parade, the Starlight, the City Fair, one of our favorites at Travel Portland is Fleet Week and the Admiral's Breakfast, which we do every year for our membership. And we have the admirals come in with their wives. One of the admirals will do a talk on what's going on militarily in, in the region, and it's really terrific. It's a great way, and a different way for people to engage with the Rose Festival that a lot of folks don't know much about, and we're really proud of that event that's been going on for many years. You know, you hear a lot about the brand of Portlandia, and I would say that it, it's a great, you know, piece of what we are. But the Rose Festival really, I think, started the brand of Portland. It's really about the community coming together, pride in the city, the joy in the kids' faces. I mean, that's a big piece of a brand, and I think the Rose Festival has managed that over the 100 years that they've been doing it. It also shows that it's a city that does its own way because each of those events that Commissioner Leonard and Jeff talked about are incredibly important to different parts of the city, and, and it's very inclusive and very much a part of what makes us a great place to be. You know, when we travel internationally and domestically, we take someone from the Rose Festival with us to talk to the tour operators because tour operators want to know, "What are my folks going to do in your town?" And the Rose Festival is an iconic event that really does get attention. It also then allows us to talk about the, the many other festivals and events, but you always want to take the best one, the biggest one, and the most important one. And that's why they go with us. You know, they've changed over the course of years, and, and it's been great to see that with the addition of new events and certainly the Rock and Roll Half Marathon. And I know as a retailer downtown, for many years, we were very close to that because we were right on the parade route, and you can't imagine the excitement that happens on the street with the retail shops because we knew it was going to bring in new people, new shoppers, and people to see the, the great energy downtown and our sense of community. We also host a familiarization trip of meeting planners who have the ability to bring conventions to Portland. We do that over Rose Festival weekend so that they can see the parade on Saturday. Why not show off your city at, at its very best? And they tell us, again, going back to the brand, they tell us what they think about the city and how exciting it is for them to see that. The Rock and Roll Half Marathon, we were incredibly excited when Jeff and Commissioner Leonard brought that to town. Kathy Kretz on our team has worked very hard with them to make sure we reserve those hotel rooms, meeting space. It's the economic impact, and I will tell you, I think runners are crazy. They will travel thousands of miles to, to run and beat themselves up, but they spend a lot of money on food, wine, retail, all those other things, and that's another reason why it's important to us at Travel Portland. We're going to continue to find ways to help them, promote them outside of the region, and certainly talk about the Rose Festival. But we couldn't be more proud of what Jeff and his team has done, the city has done to support them. And it, it's really the signature event, and it's the essence of who we are. So thank you for allowing me to talk today.
Thank you, Jeff. I'd like to have Lance Rose from the Portland Marriott Downtown Waterfront speak a little bit from his perspective.
Thank you, and good morning.
Thank you, and good morning. As Jeff mentioned, I'm Lance Rose. I'm the General Manager of the Marriott Hotel on the Waterfront, and I should start out by saying I'm not making any commitments about running in anything. Period, Jeff. But in addition to my role as a General Manager of the Marriott Hotel there, I also have the pleasure of being on the Board of Travel Portland and being the Chair of the Subcommittee on the Citywide Sales Effort. So I'm acutely and intimately involved with all of these things that we're talking about this morning, as I said, on a pretty intimate level. So I want to just make a couple of quick, brief comments that speak to the specific impact of the different activities of the Rose Festival and the Rose Festival itself. One of the, you know, really important things for any General Manager or hotelier is to understand the demographics of its customer base in pretty much every aspect of the business, whether you're selling to a certain customer base or you're trying to provide services to that customer base in a relevant and important way. So understanding as much as you potentially can about your customers is critical to the success of our business. Jeff Curtis mentioned the word relevance in terms of the Rose Festival, and you would think that being on the waterfront, right positioned as the hotel is, that we would just automatically benefit directly from everything that would happen on the waterfront. And although we certainly do benefit, it is perhaps not as direct as you might think. And the reason why I make that comment is that the competitive nature of the hotel business, as well as the demand and supply equations, demand that we're very, very careful about the customer bases that we target and who we sell to, so that we're able to get the return on investment that the ownership group of the hotel is looking for. We recently, in the hotel renovated, spent about $7 million on the lobby and the second floor of the hotel. And again, ownership's expectation is that the return on investment is very strong, and in order to get that renovation even accomplished, you have to be able to explain to the investment groups exactly what you're going to accomplish in the renovation, and then who are you going to target, what customer bases are you going to target in order to get that return on investment. As part of the design of that, we think, we spend a lot of time in our business, and particularly in our brand Marriott, thinking about the customer profile or the demographic that we call the 24/7 Achiever, and that is the customer that's in that, you know, 25 to 45 demographic, maybe a little bit more educated, tend to be using technology at a furious pace and on a pretty much hourly basis, and want to work, play, and be active in exactly the environments that they want to be involved with. And they have the ability to be very specific and choosy about that. So as it relates to what I was mentioning in a broader conversation about demographics, the Rose Festival is relevant for us, and the demographics of the attendees of the different activities are very relevant for us. Within that body, we're able to target specifically those 24/7 Achievers, as we call them, and price accordingly and sell accordingly to get those customers, that customer base into the hotel. So the Rock and Roll Marathon is very, very important to us, as is the broader festival. Just a couple of numbers that won't mean a lot to you, but I'll try to give you a little bit of context. Over the Rock and Roll Marathon, we are able to see a spike in demand from a leisure perspective in the low double digits, so anywhere from 10% to 15%. But what's really important to us is that we're able to see increases in room rates of 20% to 30%. So, you know, that sounds like a lot. It actually is in our business. Those numbers are big. Anything that gets you into double digits, whether it's on the occupancy side or the rate side, is very, very significant. And particularly on the weekends, where on the waterfront, we have the opportunity to drive to more demand. The Rose Festival more broadly, we see a combined impact of, to the hotel, we're able to drive additional RevPAR, revenue per available room, in the 10% to 15%, again, a very significant number. I can tell you that of all of the demand generators that we look at, particular in our hotel, this provides some of the most significant numbers that we could even hope to be asking for. So I won't go on any longer, because I know you have a lot of other things to cover, but we very much appreciate the support the city gives, the Rose Festival, appreciate Jeff Curtis's leadership, and it's certainly a benefit to our selling of the entire city, as well as the hotel that I run. So, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for your service as well.
Thank you. I'd like to bring up, we've mentioned a lot, but they're very important to the future of the festival. Our newest event, related to the relevance question, related to what's new on the horizon, friends from the competitor group who jointly produce the Rock and Roll Marathon, to say a few words in particular about the Rose Festival and the Rock and Roll Half Marathon. Start off, this is Josh Furlough and Bruce Walton.
Welcome.
Great, thank you for having us, and Jeff, thank you for the invitation today. What started almost a little over two years ago, when Jeff called our chairman and myself and said, "We have an idea. We want you to come up to Portland, kick off the Rose Festival with the Rock and Roll Half Marathon Series." It wasn't even two seconds later, we said, "Okay, we're up there, let's get this done." Eighteen months later, we completed the coursework. We completed all of the planning, all the expectations of what was coming around with the citizens, the community, and that work could not have been done without the help of the Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, the police, the fire, the EMS, and all of the thousands of volunteers from the local community that helped us produce this event. So without that support, without that being done by the hard work of you guys, and especially by the hard work of Jeff and all of his staff and board members behind us, we would not have been able to contribute and help bring over 14,000 runners to the community from 14 different countries, from all states around the country, and the 15, almost $15 million of impact that, as we were just saying and you were just hearing, our runners are crazy, but they love to spend money, and wherever we tell them to go, they will go. So as soon as we put that, so as soon as we put Portland up on the map last year and turned the button to turn it up for on sale, I called, Jeff said, "We've got something here. We sold 4,600 registrations in the first day. Watch out, we're going to have to, we're going to have to sell it out for the first year," which we did. The good thing is, we're coming back May 19th, which is the Sunday, May 19th, for next year, and we're looking forward for the overall success of what it is. So Jeff, thank you so much. I mean, it is, it's truly an honor to be part of the Rose Festival, and we would not be as successful as we were without the hard work of Jeff and his team.
And as Jeff Miller said and Josh just said, I'm Bruce Walton, and they, our runners are crazy. They're all crazies. We love them. They love Portland, and as Josh says, we're going to come back bigger and better next year. So thank you again for your support.
And we'll continue to work on it. We had over $100,000 raised for charity this year, and that's an important part of what the Rock and Roll Marathon Series is around the country and around the world. Over the inception of what the series has, we've raised over $270 million for charity, using our event as a massive platform for fundraising abilities. So on top of our charity staff and Jeff's staff, that is a big goal for us in 2013 here in Portland, to increase those numbers dramatically.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you. I'd like to complete our testimony with Todd Johnson, President of the Portland Rose Festival Foundation, and Drew Mahalek, CEO of Oregon Sports Authority, to join me. We'll start off with Drew to make some comments on behalf of his organization.
Thanks, Jeff. Good morning, Mayor Adams and City Commissioners. My name is Drew Mahalek with the Oregon Sports Authority. First, I'd like to salute the Portland Rose Festival Foundation for having the vision to recognize that a half marathon was a great way to add to the star of the Rose Festival, and for having the courage and the good business sense to partner with the Rock and Roll Marathon Series of Competitor Group to launch the Half Marathon this year. We couldn't have been more impressed with the inaugural Rock and Roll Half Marathon with 14,000 people. It was just a remarkable achievement by all parties. We were proud to be a very small resource in supporting the event. Our mission is not only to secure events that impact our economy and quality of life, but also be a resource to events to maximize their economic impact and their quality of life. When I first heard about this event about two years ago from Jeff Curtis, my first reaction was that this was a brilliant idea. I wasn't quite sure whether the Rose Festival could really pull it off, but I did go to the event. I spent a lot of time in the finish line area, and I can tell you, there were thousands of happy faces. It was just an incredible success. It really reflected well on the city of Portland. I didn't notice any glitches in the event, which was amazing for a first-time event and a tribute to the Rose Festival and to Competitor Group. So we're proud of the Rose Festival for becoming relevant again. We're proud of their return to prominence in the local sports industry. Obviously, their event was multiple years of preparation under Jeff Curtis's leadership. We commend them for that. And we want to commend you, the City Council, for supporting the Rose Festival, because you should share in its success too, for the support that you've given to the Rose Festival, because it reflects very well on all of us who market the city of Portland. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all the great work you do. Hi.
Good morning. Thank you for having us today. My name is Todd Johnston. I'm here as a volunteer and the President of the Portland Rose Festival. More than 100 years ago, visionary and determined Portland leaders created the Rose Festival in order to brand this city as an attractive visitor destination on the West Coast. Those leaders had already learned how valuable a major, special event could be in attracting visitors and their dollars to the city, because they had just seen the success of the 1905 Lewis and Clark Expedition and its financial impact to the local community. Since 1907, the Rose Festival has continued to realize that original goal, and today you learn specifically on how much that impact was locally. It took vision and determination then, and it takes vision and determination now. You've all participated in that, and we can only thank you for that. As a CEO of a local business, we understand the importance of quality of life and the community that we serve. It helps in attracting new and empowering employees and retaining them in the local community. The Rose Festival showcases the best of Portland and only contributes to that element of the local business here. On behalf of the Board of Directors and Portland Rose Festival Foundation, I want to thank you for being a part of that vision, and even more important, a part of that determination. Without your recent support, it's doubtful the Rose Festival would be here today sharing this wonderful information. Thank you. I also want to thank Jeff Curtis, who's done an excellent job in leading us down this path. Jeff?
Thank you, Todd. So to wrap it up, we talked about the $75 million. That's the big announcement, but the other side of it is the economics of the Festival Foundation itself. What is our long-term prognosis? How are we doing? So I want to share that with you, because we've had those direct conversations with all of you. First of all, we reproduced this independently with a $4 million expense budget, just get a tiny fraction of support from the city, through special appropriation under Mayor Adams' leadership. But we also get some services, police, fire, and those things as part of that. The return on that is $75 million. That is a really, really, really impressive return for what, from a public perspective, public resources, which are minimal. As a private nonprofit, doing this, not for anybody's individual good, for the good of this community, that's our mission, has been for 106 years, and this validates that from an economic standpoint.
I have a question about that. How much in city funding do you get total, including the waiver, the police and fire and transportation services, plus the special appropriation?
Annually, in 2012, we received a special appropriate, with the special appropriation amenities and city fee, it was $95,000.
Total?
Total.
Wave city fees?
Wave city fees.
Thank you very much.
Yes. So this graph gives you the story of where we were in 2007, 2008, from an annual operating perspective. You can see red, 2007, 2008, when we were having those serious conversations. We're proud to say, through your support, which includes the Rose Building down the waterfront, we've been able to, number one, invest money into the events to make them stronger, but also have a surplus position for consecutive years. We're not having the conversations that we had four years ago. Significant, and that's this council's direct involvement, changed the tide. And what's most significant is, is we have a goal of $1 million in reserves. You can see, when we started in 2008, in the blue line, we had nothing, no reserves. What that means is, should we had a major rain event, a major weather event, that there's nothing to pay the bills with in 2008, specifically in cash. Through the work of my organization, its board, its leadership, we're doing two things. We're halfway to a $1 million goal of our reserves and cash position. Very significant point. We're not there yet. We still have work to do, but we're doing two things. We're building our reserves, and we're continuing to invest in the events and programs to make them bigger, so more people can enjoy the Rose Festival. Again, the tide changed in 2008 under this council. So Randy, as you leave, I hope you're extremely proud of what you've done, because this is evidence of that. Mayor Adams, as you leave, I hope you are significantly proud. This is an achievement, a significant achievement. And then Commissioner Fritz, Mr. Salzman, and Commissioner Fish, we have work to do, continued work to do, but you deserve a lot of credit for being part of the efforts and delivering this great news today. I want to thank you so much for your support of the Portland Rose Festival. That concludes our presentation.
Is there anyone, any additional folks that would like to testify on this matter?
No one else signed up.
Now move acceptance of the report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Carla, can you please call the vote on the motion to accept the report?
Leonard?
So I get an annual report from Jeff and, including his predecessors, on the success of the preceding year's Rose Festival. This last year, on the opening night, where's Jeff? There's Jeff. On the opening, I think that was the opening night, and I have, since we started this event on opening night, gone down to the waterfront, introduced Curtis Elgato, welcomed all the participants there. About 20 minutes, 30 minutes before Curtis went on this last May, I parked my car across the river and had to run for cover in the local fire station out at the Hawthorne Bridge. I was born and raised in Portland, so I hope you appreciate the following statement. I had never seen it rain so hard in Portland, along with lightning and thunder. And I don't mean distant lightning. I mean, it was, it was, it looked like the end of days. And I thought, and the first thing I thought of was, wow, this is just going to ruin our revenue this year. And went down, as the rain broke, dried everything off, Curtis came out, and I introduced him to about 25 people. Curtis Elgato, one of the best blues bands in the world. About 25 people were left, and I just dreaded the last economic update from Jeff, because I knew this work we'd been doing was slowly getting us into the black, we were slowly getting towards our million-dollar goal, and they still made money this last year. They still made money. And it's because they diversified their activities, they don't rely as much on one big event, they have become relevant. People love going to the Rose Festival, and in spite of the rain, and we had a lot of it that year, and I've never seen, by the way, Jeff so frantic as he was that night, running around trying to figure out what to do to salvage the evening. But, you know, Jeff, thank you for your work, and I am proud of what we've done, and it's been a great experience. Hi.
Fritz?
Commissioner Leonard, you are much to be commended, as have all of those who have testified today. This has been a partnership, and I thank you a lot. I'm not from Portland. I have grown to love the Rose Festival for multiple reasons. We just heard that the total appropriation from the city is about $95,000, and yet it brings an economic benefit of over $70 million. It even brings close to $400,000 in specific revenue back to the city. So for those who are wondering, why do we spend time on this? The reason is because it is an economic driver. It is a significant amount of time, and so sometimes we get, we get comments from citizens about why are we spending time on it? I have volunteered to be the new champion for the council after Commissioner Leonard retires, and I recognize it is a lot of work, as well as a lot of celebration. It's definitely worth it. And since we named the Rose Festival the official festival of the city of Portland in 2009, it has twice been named the best festival in the world. Is that right? Which is a significant achievement again. I also want to read from a testimony we received from Bill Manning, who is a professor emeritus with Portland State's University School of Business, who was involved in the assessment, the economic assessment. the economic assessment. And he comments on that, but then he goes on to say, "I want you to know something about the significance of the social and emotional impact the festival has on our community. I am the only person to have the very unique opportunity to observe this impact in two distinct arenas. I cannot adequately convey the feelings of the people I interviewed during the parades. First, they view the Starlight and the Grand Floral Parades as defining events of our community. The creativity, the joy, the pride and the happiness they generate overwhelmed the emotions of these people. With 100 years of history, I heard story after story of family traditions related to parade-going. They seemed to be the glue that brought many people together. I was overwhelmed by the warmth of their feelings and responses. And having walked in the Starlight and having walked in the Grand Floral Parade, which incidentally two folks in drag walk the Grand Floral Parade, which is supposed to be for health, in six-inch heels. Even I have never walked a parade in six-inch heels, and it's quite the event." The Starlight and the Grand Floral are amazing community building. You know, I walk the parades with my sign that says, "Hi, I'm Amanda, your city commissioner." And somebody yelled at me at one of the Grand Floral walks, "You're not my commissioner. I don't live here." And I said, "You're in Portland. I am your commissioner. Welcome to the Rose Festival." So it's something that does bring in folks from outside. I'm going to continue reading from the testimony. "Second, the survey of past Rose Festival queens and princesses was even more revealing. Within the last 20 years, 97% of the women in this group graduated from college, three times the state average. Professions included ambassadors, fighter pilots, teachers, doctors, and business leaders. And 70% of these women still live within 50 miles of Portland City Hall, contributing their time and talents to their local community. A past queen, Victoria Denu, is still at many, many of the events, and so are many others of the court members." And finally, "Some courts, collective advice to current court members, congratulations. This is a once-in-a-lifetime gift, a unique and valuable gift like no other. I'm still grateful 37 years later. The Rose Festival is a class act, and Portland is like no other city. Embrace the citizens of Portland because they will embrace you." And indeed, I want all young women who are juniors and seniors to know that not only is this a unique opportunity, but it comes with a $3,000 scholarship and mentoring, and it's a program. It's not just the Rose Court. It's way beyond that, and I have had the opportunity of volunteering with the young women in the Rose Court. I'm very happy that that's still a very vibrant part of the program. And again, thank you to everybody who's here. Commissioner Leonard, this is truly a legacy. Aye.
Fish?
I want to thank my friend Jeff Curtis for all the great work that he does and his partnership with everybody up here. And Todd, and the whole team. Congratulations. To all the people who volunteer so much of their time and our Royal Rosarians and everybody that helps make our city what it can be, a heartfelt thank you. And we think so highly of the Rosarians in my shop that we hired Leslie to be a leader of one of our bureaus. And it's one of the things that is magical about Portland. And Randy's right. A number of years ago, there was a question about the continuing existence of this Rose Festival. So I want to thank Randy for all the work he's done. I can remember the earliest conversations when he said that it's nothing but upside. He didn't mention anything about lawsuits, recall petitions, and vilification in the press, but I was pleased. I mean, I think he concealed that from me. But I, I'm so proud of the partnership that has developed. And I'm very pleased today, Jeff, that you've made a compelling case for the business case for why this is a smart public investment to continue to support your good work. Thanks, everyone who joined us here today, and congratulations. Aye.
Salzman?
Well, thank you, Commissioner Leonard, for your steadfast advocacy of the Rose Festival and for your turnaround skills. I think some of that credit belongs to Jeff Curtis as well, but it is a remarkable turnaround, and we won't sell you off.
And we won't.
We will keep it, we'll not sell it off once you've reached profitability. We will keep you.
Oh.
You're our official festival. You're not going anywhere. So I'm really pleased that you've done so well. And Jeff, you've been a great leader. Great leaders always take good boards. And all the other ambassadors that speak highly of our Rose Festival and continue to keep it smart and attractive and relevant and our marquee event. So congratulations. Aye.
Adams?
Well, thank you, Commissioner Leonard, for your great leadership. It's been a pleasure to work with you on a few things related to this. To the board of the Rose Festival, thank you for your service. It's a lot of work. I appreciate it. To the great staff, team, with Jeff and Marilyn and everybody, thanks for really working through some very tough financial years to, it's just great to be here today and to see the great turnaround. And welcome to our new partners in a very Portland-like event, not just very Portland-like, the official event of the city of Portland. Very pleased to vote. Aye. All right, you're welcome to get up and move around the cabin. I have to do some procedural things to get us back on track. So Carla, would you please read items 1392, 1395, 1396?
Achieve 100% renewable electricity for city operations by directing the Bureau of Internal Business Services and the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability to facilitate a purchase of renewable energy certificates each year on behalf of all city bureaus. 1395. Authorize revenue bonds for the lighting efficiency program. 1396. Invest savings from LED streetlight conversion in system replacement and renewable energy.
Unless there are objections, I'm going to move these for further consideration to the council regular agenda next Wednesday so that council can have time to read the additional information that has come our way in the last 48 hours. So done. Can you please read the title and call the vote for 1398?
Delegate authority to write down portions of loans in the Portland Housing Bureau portfolio in order to maintain a sustainable inventory of affordable housing assets and ensure continued public benefit to our community.
Call the vote.
Leonard?
Aye.
Fritz?
Good job, Commissioner Fish. Aye.
Fish?
I want to thank Jacob Fox, Tracy Manning, Jack Graham, and Jack's team, and all the staff people worked tirelessly on this. And I also want to thank my colleagues who went above and beyond on this issue. When we first met with you, we didn't come to sell something. We came to discuss the concepts, and through those intense consultations came a better piece of legislation. And so I'm extremely grateful for the way that you helped shape what I think is a responsible piece of legislation that gives the Housing Bureau an additional tool to better manage our portfolio. So thank you. Aye.
Salzman?
Aye.
Adams?
Thank you, Commissioner Fish. Great leadership. Appreciate it. Aye. Can you please read the title and call the vote on 1399?
Authorize the 2012 Washington Park Transportation and Parking Management Agreement at Washington Park.
Leonard?
Aye.
Fritz?
There has been a lot of discussion on this, and I appreciate the input. And the problems with the process are documented in the record, including a submission today from Dr. Claudia Martin, so that is in the record. And what I'm going to say today is probably similar to what I will say tomorrow with the Northwest Parking Plan, that we, these plans are often very controversial. And the mayor has said often that we should not let the perfect be the enemy of the good. And sometimes a public process needs to come, reach a decision point, recognizing that decisions, especially of this kind of nature, can be amended. And in this particular case, the Transportation Management Association, the membership could be amended in the future. In the interim, there are now two members, one from each of the affected neighborhood associations, on the Transportation Management Association, and I appreciate Commissioner Fish for doing that. The Transportation Management Association can invite ex-officio members to participate in the discussions, and I hope that will happen so that there are voices coming of the visitors on, in those discussions, and so there can be consideration of parking for events such as fundraisers that happen at the, in the area in the evenings and on off-peak times that I hope will not be, will not deter fundraising organizations from using these great facilities. Thank you, Commissioner Fish, for your willingness to engage in this. Aye.
Fish?
Thank you, Amanda, for your kind words. And I want to just observe that after a pretty extensive set of community meetings, outreach, and process, I too have learned that there are always people that have significant questions about paid parking. And no matter how many meetings and no matter how many commitments you make, those concerns are not going to be resolved until you sit down through the TMA and actually start making decisions. And what I have committed through a number of meetings I've had with key stakeholders in the last few weeks is that we will listen, that we take seriously the concerns, and I appreciate the folks who actually came to my office, sat down, and put on the table a range of concerns. Some, frankly, very specific to their neighborhood, but others framed more broadly in terms of our whole city. And I am confident, I mean, I'm even more confident today than I was previously, that this can be successful because of the level of engagement that I have seen from neighbors and stakeholders. So I appreciate all the time and energy that's gone onto this, and I appreciate my colleagues' support. Aye.
Salzman?
Aye.
Adams?
This issue is always controversial. It is always contentious. Nobody particularly likes it who's a customer. I get that. I also appreciate the commitments. And I do agree, commitments to continue to polish like everything this council does by the next council, and I appreciate Commissioner Fish's work on this, and I appreciate the neighbors who came in and testified and were able to make some additional changes to address their concerns. Aye. 1399 is approved. Can you please read the title for a three-to-four-minute consideration? And then we will have BMC, and we're actually going to have the testimony first at BMC instead of staff presentations because we've kept you. So a four-minute presentation, council consideration. Can you please read the title for 1397?
Authorize loans for the preservation of the Park Towers Apartments and Lexington Arms.
Commissioner Fish? Well, thank you, Mayor Adams. I'm going to invite David Fuchs and Jacob Fox to come forward, take a seat. And as luck would have it, I have an introductory statement that lays out the key details of this transaction, and then we'll just have very brief comments from our esteemed witnesses and take any questions the council have. Today, we ask the council to approve an investment of $6.13 million in two buildings in the South Park Blocks urban renewal area, consisting of a TIF investment or tax increment financing investment of $3.5 million and $2.63 million of our federal entitlement CDBG funds. The TIF investment continues the city's commitment to affordable housing. In 2011, council reaffirmed the policy that directs that 30% of our tax increment financing dollars are to be dedicated to the creation and preservation of affordable homes within urban renewal districts. Now, as my colleagues also know, in 2008, we launched what we call our 11-by-13 campaign. We identified 11 buildings with federal subsidies that were crucial for affordability but were due to expire by 2013. And we committed to working with the owners and our partners to bring these buildings up to date and to renew the rent subsidies, ensuring that the buildings would remain affordable for at least another generation to people who call them home. Including the Park and Lexington, and with your support and by a total of $13 million of TIF investment, I'm pleased to report that we have preserved 600 affordable homes at nine properties, including the Admiral Apartments across from Director Park, Chaucer Court on top of the Bike Gallery by the downtown library, the Roslin Apartments at Northwest 21st, Upsher House, which is close to Chapman Elementary, Uptown Tower, which is close to 23rd and West Burnside, Walnut Park, which is roughly 7th and Killingsworth in Northeast, and the 1200 Building, which is two blocks from the Portland Art Museum. City investments in the 11-by-13 campaign include TIF as well as federal sources such as CDBG and Section 108 loan funds. And the next two buildings in our effort are before us today. There are many reasons why we're excited about revitalizing and preserving these two downtown gems, the Park Tower and Lexington. First, these two buildings have been owned and operated by the Schnitzer family. And now, we all know that the Schnitzers had every right to convert these buildings at the expiration of the subsidies to market rate, or to turn them to condos, or to sell them as an investment. Knowing that there was an opportunity to continue affordability and provide safe and decent housing for low-income people in our community, they've taken what I consider to be the remarkable step of agreeing to sell the buildings to Cedar Sinai. But first, the Schnitzers donated Park Tower to the Oregon Jewish Community Foundation so the foundation would receive the proceeds from the tower's sale to Cedar Sinai. This represents yet another shiny example of the legacy of philanthropy to our community of Harold and Arlene Schnitzer, which is continued by their son, Jordan. Second, the residents of both buildings are senior citizens, and many of them are individuals challenged with disabilities. And they, as we know, as a group, are people who live on limited fixed incomes and often struggle to keep up with housing costs. The investment that I'm asking you to authorize today will allow us to keep over 216 older adults in affordable homes, and will add services so they can remain in their homes and age in place with security and dignity. And this upstream investment also saves money by bringing services to older adults where they live so they can more successfully live independently rather than struggling on their own until they are forced to move to high-cost facilities that offer more intensive care at a much higher price. As we know, older adults have provided enormous benefit to our community, and we have an obligation to make sure there are affordable homes in our community, including homes in vibrant neighborhoods like the South Park Blocks. The 30% set aside is a limited pool of public money that must be spent wisely. And when we consider where to invest, we think about how our investments will leverage additional contributions. Through the 11-by-13 campaign, our $13 million of total TIF investments has leveraged other public and private investments of nearly $130 million. And that's a 10-to-1 investment, excuse me, a 10-to-1 leverage. Additionally, by protecting the public, excuse me, the federal Section 8 subsidies which attach to these buildings, we have ensured that more than $100 million of rent subsidies will remain in our community for 20 years. And thanks to those subsidies, it means low-income people have more money to spend on the necessities of life, which is good for them and good for our local economy. Mayor Adams, think of 11-by-13 as like Cash Oregon or the Best Program, two of your favorites. By pooling our resources and focusing on opportunities for the greatest possible leverage, we're able to bring tremendous resources into our community. And finally, I want to acknowledge today that we're working with a very strong partner on this project. Cedar Sinai Park, a local nonprofit providing residential and community-based care, is the project developer. And through this preservation process, they will take over as the owner and the manager of the building. Now, we know that Cedar Sinai Park has a proven track record. They successfully preserved over 230 homes at the Rose Schnitzer Manor, which was actually one of the inspirations for our 11-by-13 campaign. And they are developing a KiHila housing in southwest Portland, which will bring more than a dozen affordable homes, together with support services, to disabled adults. After today and with your support, we will have partnered with them on three of these cornerstone projects. Based on the core value of dignity, Cedar Sinai Park is committed to delivering a broad-based continuum of care, recognizing that people should have the right to control decisions about their own lives. We're honored and excited to have David Fuchs with us to say a few brief words today, and Jacob Fox. And I also just want to acknowledge that the Oregonian wrote a lead editorial today, really celebrating the philanthropy of the Schnitzer family and explaining why, in their view, this is a big win for our community. They are sometimes parsimonious in their praise for the things that we do on this council. But I think in this case, the business case is so compelling, and I'm proud that they not only affirmed the necessity of these kinds of investments, but called out the fact that without, without the generosity of families like the Schnitzers, these buildings would not be available for these uses. David, I'd like to introduce you to say a couple more.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is David Fuchs. I'm chief executive officer of Cedar Sinai Park. Our organization is in its 93rd year of operation. We've been providing services to elders and people with disability in the Portland community for a good, long time. We're very, very grateful to have the support and the involvement of the city in this very important work and to be part of the city's effort to preserve the Section 8 housing. I cannot praise enough the work of Jacob Fox and the Portland Housing Bureau. I cannot praise enough the work of Jacob Fox and the Portland Housing Bureau. They have been a distinct pleasure to work with. And this is one of a number of projects now that we've undertaken together. It's made a great deal of difference to have the support and the involvement of the city. I have to praise also Jim Winkler, who is in the room. Jim is really the developer and the genius behind all of Cedar Sinai Park's work in the area of affordable housing and has made a great difference to us. And we are so honored by the Schnitzer family that they see us as a conduit to continue their commitment to charitable endeavor in the Portland community as regards affordable housing. As I've mentioned in the past, this is a project that will complete our efforts to acquire affordable housing in downtown Portland. We will have 540 affordable apartments in downtown Portland as this transaction is completed. And it will give us the capacity to develop a housing with social services and healthcare services project, which will help the residents in these buildings to age in place and will help to create a model for how services can be provided. And we're very excited to be able to undertake that kind of work, not only on behalf of the residents of these four buildings, but to create a template which we hope will be replicable and be of great service to our city. I am mindful of the fact that we are making a 60-year commitment to maintaining this affordable housing as part of the covenant between us and the city of Portland. It's one of the reasons I wanted to emphasize that we are already a 93-year-old entity. And we anticipate that our organization, I doubt I'll be here in 60 years, but that our organization will be here in 60 years to celebrate that success with the city. In Jewish homiletic writing, there's a story of a man who plants a carob tree, an old man planting a carob tree. A carob tree does not provide fruit until it's about 60 years old. And he's approached by someone who says, "Why are you doing this? You will never see the fruits of this effort." And he said, "Just as I have benefited from the fruits of trees others have planted, I look forward to the future generations benefiting from the fruits of the tree that I am planting today." Members of the city council, Mr. Mayor, we are planting a carob tree together to benefit the city of Portland. We are so honored to be in partnership with the city to do this important work.
Thank you. Thank you all. Discussion from council? Anyone wish to testify on this matter?
We have two people signed up, Susan Emmons and Jim Winkler.
Unless you are going to try to talk us out of this, for the sake of time, I'd like you to relinquish your sign up. Is that right? I assume you're supportive. Great. Thank you all very much. Carly, can you please call the vote?
Leonard?
This is a great program. I appreciate the work everybody's done on it, the Schnitzer family, but especially Commissioner Fish in drawing all of this together. Thank you. Aye.
Fritz?
Well, thank you to Susan Emmons and Jim Winkler for agreeing to speed us along a little and for being here and support. Thanks to everybody for your good work. Aye.
Fish?
I too want to thank Susan for being here because Susan has made a significant part of her professional life has been dedicated to preserving affordable housing choices for older adults downtown. And it's because we believe that, first and foremost, you should be able to decide where you want to live, and you should be able to live in high-performing, desirable neighborhoods. We particularly believe that people who spend a lifetime giving to us should be able to, in their golden years, live in dignity. And Susan, thank you for your extraordinary work. Jim Winkler, who's here, this is not the first extremely complicated transaction that Jim has helped all the parties navigate. And Jim is an indispensable party and also has worked on legislation and regulatory relief around something called residual receipts. Your eyes will start glazing over if I mention what that is. But Jim knows, and it's crucial to what we've done. We have many partners to thank today, including NOAA, which at the statewide level has framed an agenda around preservation; the state of Oregon, which made tax-exempt bonds available; Wells Fargo; PNC Capital, which handled the tax credits; Harold and Arlene Schnitzer and their son, Jordan, who had the vision to keep these buildings affordable. I also want to thank the extraordinary team at the Portland Housing Bureau. These things are really complicated. And they sometimes, by the time they come to council, they seem like they're just inevitable. But this is a project which had many twists and turns. And what I'd say, none of these are inevitable. In fact, it's almost a miracle that we have saved nine of the 11. But by the end of next year, I am confident we will be able to declare victory in saving all 11 buildings. And it's because of this network of partnerships and people who are just committed to making this happen. And I'll leave you with a thought. One of the buildings we're preserving today is directly across the street from Heathman. It's one of the nicest buildings downtown. The next time you're in a major city and you're downtown and you're looking at a building like Park Tower, it is probably a building that is high-end condos or is used for a business purpose or for, you know, for housing for executives or whatever. This is one of our great buildings with a great address. And I think it speaks volumes for the values of our community that so many people will come together and say that people who have the least should have the best and should have this address for a lifetime. Twenty years of federal Section Eight subsidies, but as David mentioned, he has agreed, Cedar Sinai has agreed to 60 years of affordability, which is our requirement in consideration of public investment. Sixty years that people will be able to call this home. And as part of this transaction, we will renovate the buildings so that they are attractive for years to come. I am always proud of the work of my team, but today I'm especially proud. And I thank everyone who made it possible. Aye.
Saltzman?
Thank you to Cedar Sinai and Northwest Pilot Project. Commissioner Fish?
Aye.
Adams?
Thank you, Commissioner Fish. I know there's a lot of work behind this action and to the good folks at the Bureau of Housing, Cedar Sinai, Jim Winkler, Susan Emmons, great work. Aye. All right, can we, while you're calling the VMC items, could we have Ron Carr, Brian Libby, Gwen Baldwin, and Tom Welter come up?
Items 1367 and 1368. Approve agreements among the city and one or more of the Portland Development Commission, Rip City Management LLC, doing business as Portland Arena Management and Portland Winterhawks, Inc. For the renovation and operation of the Veterans Memorial Coliseum for use by the Portland Winterhawks hockey team and for other events, uses and activities. 1368. Approve an option agreement among the city, Office of Management and Finance, the Portland Development Commission, and Rip City Management LLC, doing business as Portland Arena Management to transfer certain land and property development rights to the Rose Quarter District and authorize the establishment of a Rose Quarter event parking district as specified.
Sorry that we've kept you an hour and 15 minutes beyond our deadline. I apologize for that. Mr. Carr, would you like to begin?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you for this opportunity. I'm honored to be able to represent the veterans' community. Excuse me. My name is Ronald Carr, Lieutenant Commander, United States Coast Guard Reserve, retired. And retired is relative, right? Anyway, the importance of the Veterans Memorial Coliseum and Memorial Gardens is what I was asked to speak briefly on. I am a proud veteran, and I belong to a brotherhood of men and women who have served this great country for more than 200 years. You may be one of them. I may have never met you or served alongside you or even fought in the same wars with you, but we have a connection, a bond, a brotherhood. We are veterans, and we know what it means to serve, not only through the sacrifices we've individually made, but also for the others of our brotherhood, as well as for the sacrifices made by our spouses, children, and families back at home. We remember them all, and we are grateful. We also remember that every person who gave the ultimate sacrifice had a mother and a father, very probably brothers and sisters, wives, husbands, aunts, uncles, and cousins. Each sacrifice and the loss of a warrior is felt by every family member, friend, associate, and loved one that had once touched their life. In America, we value the life of every human being, and this is a driving force of everything we do as veterans. We leave no one behind, and we remember. Forever, we remember. Throughout our history, we've heard many battle cries. Remember the Maine, remember the Alamo, remember Pearl Harbor, and remember 9/11, just to name a few. It's not just that we want to remember, it's also that we need to remember. We need to help other people and generations remember by sharing these stories, memories, and traditions with our children and grandchildren. It is and should be a part of our history and traditions as a nation. We must never forget the sacrifices of those men and women who have served this great country to guarantee our freedoms. We must never forget those who have given the ultimate sacrifice for our liberties. President Abraham Lincoln said it best and most succinctly in his Gettysburg Address. And I want to share a few of those lines that are specifically relevant to this great Veterans Memorial Coliseum and Memorial Garden. He said, quote, "It is rather for us to be here dedicated to the great task remaining before us, that from these honored dead we take increased devotion to that cause for which they gave the last full measure of devotion. That we here highly resolve that these dead shall not have died in vain, that this nation under God shall have a new birth of freedom, and that the government of the people, by the people, and for the people shall not perish from this earth," unquote. This is why we remember. This is why the Veterans Memorial Coliseum and Memorial Gardens are so important to our community and to our society as a whole. It comes down to something as simple as this. We want and need to remember, but even more important, it is extremely important to never forget. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, very much. Mr. Libby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Brian Libby, and I'm a journalist working here in Portland. Although I'm here on behalf of a grassroots community organization called the Friends Memorial Coliseum, which was formed three years ago by a cross-section of local citizens to help save the building. I'd like to say also, though, that we're here with the encouragement and support of some larger organizations, such as the American Institute of Architects, which represents some 4,000 architects in the city of Portland, as well as the Cascadia Chapter of the U.S. Green Building Council and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. We and the Friends of Memorial Coliseum would like to emphasize that great cities preserve and protect their architectural treasures. Portland, obviously, does not have perhaps the history that our cities on the East Coast or in Europe do, but we would argue that that's all of the more important, that we protect some of the great places, both built and natural, that we have here in the city, whether it's Pioneer Courthouse Square or City Hall right here, or Waterford Park, or many other examples. When we speak about Memorial Coliseum, people know it as a basketball arena and a place where we've all seen concerts and other events over the years. But there's a curious situation with the building in that the feature that makes it truly one-of-a-kind as a work of architecture in the world is something, unfortunately, that most of our citizens have not had a chance to experience, which is that the building is virtually the only building in the world with a 360-degree view to the outside. So when you're sitting in that seating bowl, you're looking out at the entire downtown Portland skyline and the Willamette River, although I have grandparents, uncles, aunts, cousins, friends, all who have been to the building countless times and have not experienced that. So I mention this because we'd like to emphasize the untapped potential of Memorial Coliseum, that perhaps some basketball arenas that are 50 years old don't have a compelling reason to be saved, but that this building is special. It may not have the kind of architectural detail that a building hundreds of years old might have, like a Westminster Abbey, but that Memorial Coliseum represents the best of the World War II generation's contributions to building cities and design. That it is one-of-a-kind. We call it the transparent arena sometimes. And I'd like to also emphasize that the building itself is a Veterans Memorial. Obviously, we're here today with the support of lots of veterans, including my grandfathers, who are both World War II veterans. And as important as memorial plaques are outside, we'd like to emphasize that the building itself is a living memorial because of a lot of reasons having to do with the light and its symbolism. Saving the building is also the sustainable choice. Portland has sought to become an international leader in the field of sustainable design and construction. But the experts of green building will all tell you that the greenest move we can make is not building a building from the ground up, even if it's an incredibly sustainable one, like the Oregon Sustainability Center, but in preserving our existing buildings, or at least the special ones. I know my time is running out here. And I'd just like to emphasize on behalf of all my partners that this opportunity is a kind of what we call a Pioneer Courthouse Square moment, that the Rose Quarter really ought to be the center of the east side and maybe one of the centers of the city. And it's been woefully underserving the people of Portland up until now, at least in terms of being a great place. We go there for events, and then we leave. And we believe that Memorial Coliseum, along with the sensible development of the space around the buildings, can act as a catalyst, that there's a long record proving that there is economic value in great urban places. And so, as I close, I happened to notice earlier when Rose Festival was being addressed, I thought of the appropriate nature of Rose Festival and Memorial Coliseum being addressed by the council at the same time because they are both part of the very DNA of the culture and the history and the fabric of the city. And you can't save every building, but this is one that is extra special. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mayor Adams. My line. Can't quite tell. There we go. My name is Gwen Baldwin, and I represent the Lloyd Executive Partnership, which includes some of the largest property owners in the Lloyd District, such as The Blazers, Langley Investment Properties, Kaiser Permanente, Liberty Northwest, Bonneville Power Administration, and Pacificore. I'm here today because the Veterans Memorial Coliseum project is one of the top priorities for the Lloyd Executive Partnership as we move towards leveraging the really amazing resources that are in the Lloyd District and have yet to be tapped. That includes the Convention Hotel project, the Lloyd Eco-District. We very much appreciate council's support for the Eco-Districts in general and Lloyd Eco-District in specific, as well as private sector development, which leverages the public investments of Streetcar and Light Rail. These are exciting times. I mean, not only have you passed the Lloyd Eco-District resolution giving standing to the Eco-District, the hotel is progressing, finally. The super block development is in design, and we expect that to break ground and go through permitting in 2013. And the 200 Broadway project, which is sort of at the other end of the district, at the Broadway Bridgehead, is in design. This is what we're talking about. We're talking about a vibrant, evolving, formerly land-banked neighborhood. But make no mistake, the Veterans Memorial Coliseum project is a huge piece of this. This is a city-owned asset. It deserves basic maintenance. As a Veterans Memorial Coliseum, the community demands that kind of respect for the Coliseum. That in and of itself would be worthy of your support. But this project goes beyond that. It provides a tie-in to all the things that we talk about. It provides the tie-in to establish a more vibrant and robust development at that Bridgehead. It will do more to bring in and engage the community to enliven development prospects and opportunities in that area. It has the potential, and I know these conversations are in discussion, very exciting potential, to be a part of shared thermal energy, a part of that Eco-District, as well as providing alternatives and activities for those thousands of conventioneers who will be coming in once we establish a headquarters hotel. So this is an important piece of the puzzle. We really appreciate all of your attention and effort to land this plane. And we very much encourage your support for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wolf?
Good morning. My name is Tom Welter. I'm the executive director of the Oregon School Activities Association. We're actually a private nonprofit corporation representing 292 public and private high schools all across the state of Oregon. We conduct 116 state championships each year in 19 different activities. Besides our athletic activities, we do state championships in cheerleading, dance and drill, band, choir, orchestra, solo music. We use the Memorial Coliseum, and probably other than the Rose Festival, we've been at, our first event held in the Coliseum was a boys' basketball tournament starting in 1966. And we have used it continuously since that time. So this is the 47th year we've conducted some of our championships using Veterans Memorial Coliseum. I've listed in the handout I gave you, I wanted to show you, not only is it important for the students in the Portland metropolitan area, but we conduct state championships. So, for example, at our wrestling tournament, we conduct a two-day wrestling tournament at the Coliseum where we have 1,682 matches over two days. We have students representing 160 of our high schools, of our 292 schools, come into Portland. Portland over that period of time to conduct that activity. Currently, our large school, boys' and girls' basketball tournament is not held at Veterans Memorial Coliseum because the scoreboard doesn't work. We couldn't play a basketball tournament. You know, the events that we conduct for our students, for most of them, the vast, vast majority, participation in the state championship is the pinnacle of their athletic career. And so we want to try to provide them the best venues and the best opportunities so that they have a memorable experience, whether they win a state championship or not. And right now, we're using the Rose Garden for our large school basketball tournament. We probably can't afford to be there much longer because we don't draw the crowds that warrant, you know, using that large facility. And I don't think The Blazers can afford to have us there because we don't draw the crowds to be able to afford to use that activity. So we're very interested in moving that event, it's a four-day event, over to the Coliseum once it gets renovated and is suitable for playing a state basketball tournament. We'd like to thank you for your consideration. Certainly, we value Veterans Memorial Coliseum, as I said, and we think some of the best activities we can provide for our young people are... Some of the best lessons we can teach them are through high school activities, and we appreciate your cooperation in making venues available to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your testimony. We really appreciate it. Nick Stroud-Mehalek, Jeff Curtis, Sarah Heinecke, Stuart Timmons. Did Stuart have to go?
Yeah.
Okay.
Unfortunately, Sarah could not stay. That's why.
So that gets us to Portland Business Alliance. Carly, are you testifying? Is there someone from the American... Sorry, the Architectural Heritage Center? Please come forward. And then we'll see if there is any non-invited testimony, and we'll go into... Dina Alexander will take us through the proposed amendments. So, Mr. Mehalek, would you like to start?
Sure. Drew Mehalek, Oregon Sports Authority, hello again. Just a brief remark, this is probably the last time I'll address the five of you as a unit, and I think during your tenure as a unit, I think you've done some remarkable things, and I think you've set the table for more things to come down in the future. I am particularly going to miss Randy and Sam, both professionally and personally, so I just wanted to say thank you. But I'm here today to really support the renovation of Veterans Memorial Coliseum. It can be a catalyst for much-needed economic development. The renovation of the Coliseum can place Portland in a class by itself, will be the only city anywhere with two first-rate arenas just a few feet apart that can give us advantages to get events that nobody else can get. It gives us a chance to get back the U.S. Figure Skating Championships, to get back the Do Tour. In just a few years, this one excites me so much, we are going to be able to host the greatest in-season basketball tournament of all time with 24 teams coming to Portland, Kentucky, Duke, North Carolina, Texas, Florida, Oklahoma. I mean, the list goes on. It's all the major college teams to celebrate Phil Knight's 80th birthday. That can't happen without a renovated Veterans Memorial Coliseum. The economic impact from that event alone will exceed $31 million, which is what we're talking about for the renovation. Are tickets on sale yet? We're talking about it. I actually flew out and met with... Actually, it was the Michigan State Athletic Director's idea to have this, and we're planning that. The Trail Blazers and the Winterhawks have both made unparalleled commitments financially in terms of their time and their resources to make this happen. The PDC has concluded 18... Or, I'm sorry, 14 agreements, which they should be saluted for getting that done. But essentially, this can give our city a competitive advantage. It can bring us economic impact multiple times the cost of the renovation. It's really what we've been waiting for, and I would encourage you to favorably consider it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here... I'm Carly Ryder from the Portland Business Alliance, and I'm here on behalf of Sandra McDonough, President and CEO of the Portland Business Alliance. Sandy served on the Rose Quarter Stakeholder Advisory Committee, and she was unable to be here today, but she wanted to make sure that you heard her comments of support for this project. This is an example of a successful public-private partnership that Portland is known for, and it would not have happened without the tireless efforts of Mayor Adams, Portland Development Commission Chair Scott Andrews, city and PDC staff, and the dedication of our private partners, the Portland Winterhawks and Portland Arena Management. We thank you all for your collaborative efforts. A lot of painstaking and detailed work has gone into this proposal. The result is a collaborative deal that works. It lays the groundwork for future partnerships and provides real community benefit for the neighborhood, the city, and the region. This project is exactly the kind of investment that urban renewal was designed to provide and produces the short- and long-term benefits that epitomize the use of urban renewal. We believe the project merits the investment of urban renewal for the following reasons. First, it has private sector participation. This project could not have been possible without the Portland Winterhawks and Portland Arena Management, who are bringing a lot to the table, and we thank them for their contributions. Second, this development will catalyze this area and spur economic investment in the broader Rose Quarter area. This project will provide certainty for other investors that the city is a dedicated partner in revitalizing this neighborhood. And third, it creates a local and regional benefit by offering a viable entertainment facility for the Portland Winterhawks and other events. This attracts new energy to the area, enlivening it with civic and economic activity. Having the city and the Portland Development Commission involved in this project and poised to assist with future development opportunities in this area will support additional strategic investment. And we're supportive of the city and the Portland Development Commission continuing to work with private sector partners and use this model as an opportunity as the beginning of other key investments in surrounding parcels. So thank you again, Mayor Adams, for your leadership on this project, and our thanks again to Chairman Scott Andrews and the Portland Development Commission for their work. And most importantly, we want to thank the Portland Winterhawks and Portland Arena Management for their investment to this area and their commitment to the community. Thank you.
Now, I'd like to ask a question which you could get back to me on, and that's the question of whether the Portland Business Alliance has taken a position on the second half of this deal with the transfer to PDC of the Benton Block. So if you could get back to me on that later. Thank you.
Mr. Curtis, welcome back.
Good to be back. Mayor Adams, Commissioners, I speak on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Portland Rose Festival Foundation, its volunteers, and the hundreds of thousands of people that have enjoyed their beloved Grand Full Parade from Veterans Historic Memorial Coliseum. Back in 1961, the Rose Festival is one of the stakeholders that was part of a conversation to get that building constructed. We were one of the first events in that facility, and the facility specifically designed its doors in parallel fashion specifically to be the home of the Grand Full Parade. So there's a lot of historical and emotional ties to our beloved Grand Full Parade. That year in 1961, the Rose Festival hosted six events in Coliseum, including our Queen's Coronation, Queen's Ball, that featured Les Brown and the Band of Renown. Don't know those today, but certainly back then, they were a big deal, for lacrosse games and, of course, the Grand Full Parade. The Oregonian called it "an extraordinary fine vantage point." This is quoting the Oregonian in 1961, "from which the parade performed outside the Coliseum and marched straight through those large doors that it was designed for that very reason." Now, 50 years later, the Queen's Coronation and the Grand Full Parade still utilize this fabulous venue. You know, and since 1961, 400,000 people have watched the parade from the seats, paying back then $2.50 to what they pay now $30 per seat. There's an economic value to the Rose Festival, and it's a big factor in our Grand Full Parade and our overall operating budget. But it also provides an opportunity for tour groups, seniors, who don't want to go out on the streets, they want a nice, comfortable place. And it's the only venue in the United States, parade venue, that is indoors. And that's a tremendous advantage as we're talking about our national, international position in the very competitive special event and tourism market. Today, the parking lot serves as its original telecast location, which that now is streamed to millions of households across the country directly from the Benton Lot, and its adjacent streets are used for the formation of the parade. So this is the home of our largest event, and a significant one. And it's part of our history. It's hosted a lot of Rose Festival events over the year. And most recently, I have to add that in our centennial year, Navy... We had Navy SEALs jump from an airplane and landed on the roof of this building as part of an overall television "Welcome to Portland." It's a very significant part.
And the damage, the damage they caused is like $2 million. So we'll...
It's still there, isn't it?
Yeah. We'll send you the bill.
We'll send it to the Navy, Bill.
Send it to the Navy.
So, again, I want to just, on behalf of the staff and board that have worked closely in watching this developments, I want to applaud all those, including Mayor Adams, your leadership to develop a workable solution to a tremendous facility that has tremendous community value, and I thank Scott Andrews, PDC, and certainly the Winterhawks and The Blazers for a collaborative effort. This is a real win for our community, and it has our full support. Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice to welcome you.
Excuse me, just... Simel, if you could just send me your comments on how the festival would function without the Benton Block. Thank you. Sorry.
It's now good afternoon. Fred Leeson, representing the Bosco Milligan Foundation Architectural Heritage Center. I'll make it as brief as I can because you're probably as hungry as I am. Whenever we run into an endangered building, there's no greater home run that you can hit than one to save the building, renovate it in an architecturally appropriate way, and restore it to its original use. And that's what you stand on the cusp of, and you have our deep admiration for fighting the three-year battle to get that done. This truly is very significant. We are a local partner of the National Trust for Historic Preservation. This is a building that's certainly drawn their attention, their following this, and so this is really a great thing for preservation. I read through the ordinances online yesterday, and I noticed all the references to the economic risk, and I just wanted to remind some of you that were probably not here in the 1970s when I was a newspaper reporter for the Oregon Journal and covering the Exposition Recreation Commission, which then managed the Coliseum, is that the Coliseum gave up literally millions of dollars from its revenue to subsidize Civic Stadium and Civic Auditorium. And so, in a sense, this is... And you're supporting the Coliseum now. We're making good on a past debt, and I really admire you folks for sticking with it and staying with it and making this happen. Thank you.
Great to see you. All right. Are there other folks that would like to testify? Please come forward now if you'd like to testify. All right. We're going to take... Because council, I apologize to staff, some of you get paid by the hour consulting fees. So you're going to... We're going to take a 10-minute break, 15... I'm going to say 15-minute break so that we can do what we need to do, and we'll meet you everyone back here at 12:45. To go through staff issues. To go through staff issues.[151.81]
To provide us with just a quick summary of some non-business points, is that right? Non-financial term points, and then also walk us through the proposed amendments. What I'd like to do, we can either save the amendments for a future vote, or we can just get the amendments incorporated in, which is my preference, but it's a soft preference, so that we just don't lose track of them. And so Ms. Alexander, if you could take it from here, I'd appreciate it.
Great, thank you, Mayor, fellow council members. I'm Dina Alexander, Radler White Parks and Alexander, outside counsel for the city. As the mayor said, I wanted to point out a few things for you, primarily in the redevelopment agreement, but which flow through the other documents, which I think are key legal points you might be wondering about, thinking about, and otherwise, we would be presenting to you on similar-type deals. And then I will walk you through the amendments to the documents. So in the redevelopment agreement, and I'll give you section references, so it's in the record, should you choose to look at them later, but I wanted to point out the following. One, recital H in the redevelopment agreement sets forth the intent of the parties that the 2% art budget be used for the Memorial Gardens project, which I wanted to point out, as it's been discussed in other testimony. In section four of the RDA, there are the public goals and objectives set forth, and in particular, section 4.6 of the redevelopment agreement talks about continued community access, and says that it should be kept the same as it is today, so the events, OSAA, the other events that have been long traditions at VMC will continue.
Is that a change?
It is not a change. It's an express statement that things will remain as they are with respect to community access.
Thank you.
In section 5.2, there's a provision that says the Hawks will commit to play all of their home games, either in the garden or at VMC, and that was important because they wanted to have, to know that they had access to be able to play there for 10 years. So in consideration for that, we ask them to also make a commitment to the Rose Quarter over a 10-year period. Hitting on some key construction-type issues, section 11.7 does say that the general construction contract will be a guaranteed maximum price, something that we typically look for in these projects.
Just, I'm sorry, I'm not thinking fast enough. Going back to 5.2, it's that the Hawks will play all that home games for 10 years. Why not, I thought the whole deal was that we're trying to get to 20 years.
It is, it is a 20-year deal through the operating agreement that's conditional with, between the city and PDC, and directly with Pam. And so there are, there will be ability for the Hawks to continue to play. However, what the Hawks have committed to in the RDA in favor of the city commissioner is to play their home games there for 10 years.
But they're not demanding, what are they demanding for 20, for, a commitment to for 20 years?
They want the ability to play there for 20 years. What we have not done in return is demand that they commit to play there for 20 years, only for the first 10 years.
Okay, I'll, I'll think more about that. I understand the concept.
So back on some of the key construction items, in section 12, Pam, as you all know, is acting as the construction manager for the project, sets forth some of their responsibilities in that role, such as enforcing the construction and vendor contracts, taking reasonable efforts to ensure that safety measures are in place during the construction, ensuring that the improvements will be properly integrated into the existing elements in the Coliseum, and causing the construction to be performed in a good and workman-like manner. So again, typical types of things that we would want to see in this agreement from a construction perspective. There are also provisions in the agreement, section 12.3.2. Each party has a construction representative, including the city. Those construction representatives are, will participate in all regularly scheduled meetings while the project is being designed and constructed, and they have the right to participate in any and all meetings where there would be material changes to design and construction As you may recall, in December, I believe, of last year, this council exempted Pam from the public procurement process. However, I wanted you to know that in section 12.5 of the redevelopment agreement, that all of the vendors and the contractors are required to provide payment and performance bonds to support their work on the project. There are also provisions for warranties to protect against defective work. The general contract for construction must have a two-year warranty, and all other contracts, Pam has agreed to use reasonable efforts to seek two-year warranties, but there's a minimum of one year required, which for many of these types of contracts would be standard.
Two years is, is that pretty standard for a construction contract?
Two, two years is on the long side, and that's why we've agreed to it in the general construction contract. Would love to have it in all of them, but because of the cost sensitivities around this project, it may not be feasible, but the parties have agreed to try. I wanted to talk a little bit about the, what is built into the document to support the funding, because the Winterhawks are not funding all of their money upfront, nor are they intending to put up a letter of credit to support their funding obligation, and the money's coming in over time, as described at the last session. I wanted you to know the protections that are built into the document, should they not fund, and the way we've tried to incent to make sure that they do fund. One, there will be a guarantee, a personal guarantee, in favor of the city and PDC from the owner of the Winterhawks. If the Hawks fail to fund any of their money timely, the revenue-sharing agreement, which is much to their benefit, helping them get some return on their $10 million investment, would automatically terminate, as would the second 10-year operating agreement, which would give them the ability to play in VMC from '23 to '33. They also lose consent and approval rights that they have under the documentation, and there are immediate defaults that are triggered if they don't fund. So we have tried to build in as much protection as we can around making sure that we get all the money into the project. I wanted to briefly describe to you how cost overruns in this project are dealt with. One, we are carrying a very large project contingency, 20%, through construction, so that's our first line of defense for overruns. Pam has the right to apply that money as they see, as they deem reasonable in light of the circumstances, if we were to encounter any overruns. Pam then has rights to value-engineer the project, to get us within budget, should they need to do so. And after that, Pam has agreed to take responsibility for cost overruns, except in a situation where an overrun is caused by hidden or unknown environmental conditions that already exist. And those items are dealt with separately through reallocation of budgeted line items, as well as an environmental contingency of $200,000, and another $200,000 of funds that the Spectator Fund has agreed to, to put up, should we encounter unknown environmental conditions in the facility. Finally, in, in things that flow through the project funding agreement and in the revenue-sharing agreement, I wanted you to know that the revenue-sharing agreement is expressly subject to the Winterhawks funding all of their money, so they don't get the benefit that they've negotiated in that, should they not fund. And in addition, if the Hawks were not to timely fund any portion of their money, the city does not have to approve additional contracts and, and commit itself to spend more dollars, if it would not, in fact, have sufficient resources in the door to do so. So those were the, sort of the highlights of things that have not already been discussed in previous testimony, I wanted to highlight for you. Certainly encourage any, any questions or anything else I can answer for you about the documents.
Mary Adams, can I, can I get a sense of, of what your will is in terms of process? Are we?
Yeah, I talked about it before you came in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. So today, I just want to have the council put the amendments, most of them are technical, one has to do with parking that brings it back to council, doesn't make it automatic. I'd like to have council put those into the document, and then there might be more amendments to come, but that way, we don't sort of lose track, and we give the public, we're able to post the amended documents for the public to comment on.
So we put the amendments in, and then, do you have a sense of the timeline for the, for resolving the dispute that the Winterhawks have with the league?
I met with the owner last night, and the management team of the Winterhawks, and I'm going to be conversing, attempt to converse with the league over the next couple of days. So I'd just like this to move over to the following week, but we might continue it beyond there, to a week beyond that. So unfortunately, we're not in a position of control over the league's timeline, but I'm going to continue to advocate for resolution before the 19th.
But it would not be your intent to have us vote on this until the issues between the owner of the Winterhawks and the league are resolved?
I certainly am not interested in forwarding an agreement that I think would fail based on the sanctions that they've levied, yeah. So I don't, it depends on what your definition of result is, but...
Well, my definition would be, as I understand it, the owner of the Winterhawks has said he will not agree to this deal, given the sanctions that are outstanding, and in reading the responses that we've received last night, and have a hard copy of today, the question that's asked, is it possible to complete the renovation deal in the light of the Western Hockey League sanctions against the Portland Winterhawks? Essentially, the answer is kind of, and however, PDC is not willing to proceed with the deal unless...
Neither do I. I'm just, I don't want to engage in hypotheticals, I want to take it one step at a time. I'm going to be talking to the league this week, so I'm not going to bring anything, and the PDC isn't going to agree to anything, and the owner isn't going to agree to anything that we don't feel will make the pro forma. So that's, that's, I'm not being cagey, I just want to talk to the, I think we've all been, all the parties have been clear that they've, the sanctions, as we currently understand them, will not, I'm not comfortable approving this deal with the, you know, the sanctions, not being able to go to playoffs and such, so that conversation is underway, so I can't give you anything more definitive, other than I want to continue the discussion next week, and we'll push it off another week if we have to. So I don't know that I can, giving you, given the circumstance, anything more definitive than that.
Can I, I want to, are you the appropriate person to address some questions off the...
Well, I'd like her to, just so you have it in your mind, before we vote on it, sort of the, have, Dina just went through the non-financial deal points, and then I'd like you to go through the proposed amendments, and then we'll have the whole team available to answer questions on any issue.
Great, so in terms of amendments, first, I wanted to talk about item 1367 on today, today's agenda, which is the package of amendments to the redevelopment agreement and the related documents. These are mostly clean-up and technical in nature, so what I am going to do is just highlight for you a few of the key items. One, and this is a change that happens through, in a few different places, there is a neighborhood livability partnership agreement that Pam has entered into with the Elliott Neighborhood and the Lloyd District Community Association. We had omitted, not intentionally, we had omitted the Lloyd District Community Association in the document, so in a few places, we have added them. There is another change, where based on the timing of, of this matter in front of you, we, we needed to change the timing of when documents would potentially be signed, and when some of the documents would actually be finalized. So there is a change in the redevelopment agreement that reflects the realities of what is actually occurring. There is a very minor but important substantive change in the redevelopment agreement and the project funding agreement that clarifies the date by which all of the Hawks' funding would be due, and that date, if you might recall from last week's session, is July 1st, 2013. So a clarifying change was made on that in the documents. And in the Second Amendment to the operating agreement with Pam, and in the conditional operating agreement between the city and PDC, we have clarified some insurance provisions that require both property and liability insurance to be carried on certain items. So those are, that's really the, the meat of the changes in that document. And so we, when and if this is to be voted on, that these, these amendments would be incorporated into the documents that you would ultimately take action on.
These, these sound like, the way you've described these amendments, they sound like technical, housekeeping, legal things. They don't, sound like they, they're, they go to the heart of the structure of the deal.
I think that's correct, Commissioner Fish.
And did you go through the PBOT amendment as well?
Right, yeah.
Okay, great.
So the second item, which is 1368 on your agenda today, are the amendments to the option agreement between the city and, and PDC. And the changes, first, I want to note, there were some changes that I think council was presenting with last week. I know, Commissioner Fritz, you had some additional changes that you gave to OMF after the meeting. Those are reflected in these changes, is my understanding, so that you're aware of that. And in essence, what these changes do is make it clear that the action on the event parking district will come back to council, and so pulls back a little bit of the authority that was given to the PBOT director, and makes it clear that there will be some public process around the event parking district, and that, that it will be brought back to council specifically.
So now, we can have questions, Jack, or whomever, Betsy, come up, or questions on anything. So Commissioner Fish.
Well, one of the things, and I appreciate the Q and A that we got on, in response to some of the, in response to the questions we put in the record at the last hearing. I had a couple of questions off of this. One had to do with the percent for the art, because I, the answer is very clear, but now I'm even more confused, because I, I thought, someone said that the percent for the art generated by this project would be reinvested at VMC, and the explanation describes how RAC distributes its money and its formula, but it doesn't, doesn't state that the money will be spent, it says it can be spent on art located in Memorial Gardens, but it doesn't specify that this money would be spent. And I, I had, I was operating under the assumption that this, we were going to use this pool of money to maintain some of the memorial features, so am I wrong on that?
I may actually let Betsy respond to that question.
Can you push that? Oh. Betsy, Dina.
I think both Dina and I have responses, so let Dina start.
So Commissioner Fish, because of the, because what the code says in terms of how RAC is, is mandated in the code to allocate the money, what we did in the document, and I think you were out of chambers when I hit this point, in recital H of the redevelopment agreement, what we've done is express the intent of all of the parties to the redevelopment agreement, that that money be spent on the Memorial Garden. My sense is there, and I'll let Betsy address this, there will need to be further conversations with RAC about this specific issue, but all of the parties to the RDA want that money to go to the Memorial Gardens project.
And I, and I've talked to RAC, and they're absolutely supportive.
So if we, if we, if it's our intent to put it into the Memorial Garden, is this restriction on what would qualify for use of the funds, does that apply? Where it could not be used for fountain seating, et cetera?
So my, I, I think that part of this depends on how broadly RAC interprets and, and what their guidelines say, but I did not read the code to prohibit the expenditures on the gardens, as the parties to the RDA have envisioned it.
I see.
And I think the intent is that any piece commissioned through the percent-for-art program would complement and enhance the Memorial Gardens and the veterans' memorial aspect of the building, and would also include veterans in the selection process in some way.
Okay. I don't, I don't remember us in the past, maybe waiving these rules on a specific project, but the council, I guess, is the ultimate arbiter of that. Right, I'll, I'll let other people jump in.
Commissioner Saltzman?
So on the event parking district proposal, so this will come back to council prior to implementation, or is that correct?
It will come back to council for authorization, correct, before any implementation is done, and after the public outreach that's already been underway by the Lloyd TMA with PBOT is concluded.
So is there a, what I'm, I'm thinking about is that with the Jeldwyn tax parking surcharge...
Right.
Council specifically authorized a maximum rate, but any specific, any changes beyond that maximum required council approval? So I guess I'm wondering, do I need to offer an amendment at this point with regard to the $3.50, or is that something that should wait until a later date?
The, the document does say that they could increase up to $3.50 per hour for events, so there's, I read it as a cap built into the way that the document has been revised.
Which, which agenda item is that document under?
So that is 1368, and you should have both redline and cleaned versions of the documents in front of you, Commissioner, and in section, if you, if you are looking at it...
I don't have it, I don't think.
That will come back to you all again.
So any...
But the assumption is it's no more than $3.50.
Can't go higher without council approval.
You don't have a district right now, so it's not even formulated, but you're sending the message with this amendment that that's the highest lease at the outset you're willing to tolerate.
Here they are, sorry.
Thank you very much.
Carla?
So on top, you should have a document that is the redline showing the changes, and if you flip to, what is the, the fourth page, at the top, there's a subsection two, which talks about the extended meter hours and the rate increases up to $3.50 per hour.
While, while we're going through that, Jack, can I address a question to you?
Sure. Well, if I, wait, before we leave, because I'm looking at that sub-paragraph three, and it does talk about modifying meter hours and rates, and gives that to the PBOT and TMA, and I guess I'm, I would like to suggest that council would have to approve anything above $3.50.
And I think back up in, in paragraph two, the very last sentence, Commissioner Saltzman, says higher rates and extended hours will only apply on event dates, so that up to the $3.50 is only supposed to apply, and this...
No, I mean, I get that part, but it looks like the sub-paragraph three does talk about, leaves a discretion to PBOT Director, TMA, or Lloyd TMA to...
Only to propose.
So Commissioner, if you go back to the previous page, the council directive is amended to direct PBOT's director to prepare for council considerations, so all of this would come back before council, and council could at that time determine whether or not to revise that, modify it, or approve it as submitted.
So the one reason to, because it all has to come back, but one reason to keep it in there by way of signaling common sense is, right now, we have mechanical meters that are six days a week till 10:00 PM, I think, five or six days a week around the convention center, right now, which doesn't make a lot of sense, in my personal opinion, and should be scaled back to something that's a little more variable, but they'll have to, they'll have to bring that all back for your approval.
Jack, could we go to page four and five of the, of the responses that have been furnished to us, and it starts under the heading of property transfers? And first, I really appreciated the history lesson of how we came into ownership of these properties, between '57 and '61, and a city bond measure, so that, that's, that's how we acquired the land. Can someone just walk me through, at the top of page five, what we have here in terms of fee parcels and development rights parcels? What I'm, just want to make sure I understand is, what's the value of the property and assets that were, that's being proposed to be transferred to PDC in connection with this agreement? And you seem, you seem to have two categories, could someone just walk me through this?
I'm going to start off, and then I'm, I'm going to let Betsy do a little bit more on this here. These are actually just what we got out the records. This is really not any assessed, assessed value on it. We would have to move, if we decide to, to move forward, if council decide to move forward with this transfer of land, there would have to be an assessed value done, in order to determine exactly what the exact value of, of the land is. There has been some estimates of land adjacent to it, some, some figures, I think, PDC had some figures that they had looked at, but right now, we don't have an exact value of it. Right now, we're looking at the Benton Lot, as far as the assessors, what the assessors has valued it, it is about $2 million, $2 million. But I wouldn't tie to these numbers because of the fact that we don't have, like, a fair market value of them at this time.
Or an environmental assessment.
Yeah.
All right, so among the fee parcels, I guess I understand that, it seems like pretty straightforward. What about under, the, the information under the heading of development rights parcels?
The development rights parcels are ones where, for example, the parking garage parcel, the option agreement doesn't contemplate transferring the land itself to PDC, but rather transferring development rights through a ground lease or other mechanism. So the city would retain ownership, PDC would have the rights to develop on those properties. So that's, that's why they're broken out into two different ways.
That, those development rights for 15 years were held by Pam?
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Okay, that's helpful, and, and the, Mayor, could I just, again, could I just understand, and I'm, I'm a little diminished today, so I'm probably a little thicker, thicker than normal, what's the reasoning for including the fee parcels, and why is that a fundamental part of the deal and the balance of this deal?
Well, part, I think it's a matter of, we're, PDC is taking on additional responsibilities, depending on how things happen in the second decade of this agreement, so that's one thing. And they have to be able to, they're taking on additional, I should say, they're taking on some upfront liability if our private partner doesn't come through. So the land helps backstop PDC's ability, because this tax increment district is going away, and they've spent, and we put, put aside the 30, or 20... away, and they've spent, and we put, put aside the 30, or 20 some percent for housing, so the land is a way for PDC to take on the liability in case our private partner doesn't come through, be able to sell the land, get it, entitle it, and get it ready for market and sell it in a, in a quick way. This is what their core, one of their core proficiencies. So that's upfront. Then in the second year, if they end up operating, taking the place of PAM in terms of the operations of Veterans Memorial Coliseum, they also have some assets to bank on and the next 10 years to develop them to their full potential, which the city's general fund, or OMF, or the spectator fund would enjoy some of their success as well as contemplated. That too was contemplated but not spelled out in, when PAM had the position and the right to develop for those 15 years. These parcels have not had a recent environmental assessment, so we don't know what's on them. The sooner that the city can get it into redevelopment, smart redevelopment, the more resources we will have to pay its share of superfund, these parcels, to clean it up if they need to be cleaned up, the sooner that the general fund would get it. But I also think that it's a, an issue of basic, some basic fairness in the family of bureaus. PDC is a creature of the city. It's, it's running out of TIF money. It has to be entrepreneurial. This is the way that the City of New York, this sort of entrepreneurial development is the way that the City of New York Business Development Department has, funds its, funds its way, so I think it's just sort of smart to take the place of PAM and to take ownership with that, given liabilities it's assuming. I also think, you know, the, I think the tax rolls say it's $3 million, so it's probably more than that, but a lot of this beyond the Benton Block is dribs and drabs. It's going to take a very creative public-private effort to get those, some of these smaller odd-shaped parcels developed, and council and PDC commissioners are going to want to make sure that it's done in a very good way. The other part is, if the value, PDC, when the Bureau of Housing was created, PDC transferred over land and properties about $21 million, and that's on top, or in addition to the TIF allocation. So, you know, that was a transfer to the general fund. The Bureau of Housing didn't pay for it. In this case, we want to get this developed, we want to get it developed well. It's somewhere between three and whatever million dollars in value. They're separate from the city, but they're part of the city family as well, just like when we separated PDC and housing.
And are they, under this agreement, able to redevelop Benson Block now, or do they have to wait 10 years?
It's just a second reading.
The, the agreement says that in the first five years, they are essentially unable to do any development on the Benton Lot unless the city and PAM were to agree to that redevelopment. So there's a lockout essentially for five years.
And PAM would have the development rights for that remainder, or does this, no?
No, so PAM's development rights have expired.
Okay.
So there's no one currently with development rights. Technically, PDC would have them, they're just not usable really in the first five years.
And what's the reason for that?
Because of the need for the parties to determine how the current uses on the Benton Lot can be handled in other ways to the satisfaction of PAM to make sure that VMC is still operational.
So is it practical-
I was just saying, and the Rose Festival and everybody else, yeah.
So it's a practical matter, or we don't even think it could be done, even if we wanted to start tomorrow?
Correct.
Okay.
If, if, we've talked around the negotiating table, if something, lightning strikes and it's within five years, the council can always vote to move faster than five years, but it requires a vote to come back, and you get asked the questions like, how's the Rose Festival going to get through, and all these other things?
Great, thank you.
All right. Additional questions? And I'd like to move the amendments for the sake of just banking the technical amendments and the parking amendments, it sounds like there'd be support. So I would like to move the amendments proposed by Ms. Alexander, contained in memo dated this memo, underline and strike out.
Are you moving the amendments to 13, no, bear with me a second, 1367 and 1368 jointly or separately?
Whatever you advise me to do.
I would advise them separately.
I move the amendments to 1360-
Seven first.
Seven first.
Now, second, for the purpose of putting them in the record.
Yeah, we're not voting on the overall record. So it's been moved and seconded. Carla, can you please call the vote?
Leonard?
Aye.
Fritz?
I may have further amendments after I've had time to look these through, but I appreciate the work so far. Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Adams?
Aye. Amendments approved, I now move the amendments for item number-
1368.
1368.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Carla, can you please call the vote on the proposed motion?
Leonard?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Adams?
Aye. All right, well, I think we just now, this will go naturally to the next council. If we don't have anything, then I'll move it to the council after that, but I think we've pushed the issue, if my colleagues agree as far as we can today, given what we know and don't know.
Put him in the next council session, not this council, next council, or the council after that.
Next council session, next council as well. Will this be just a regular agenda item in the next-
Correct.
So probably toward the end of the agenda, just so that it-
Yeah, we'll put this, not a time certain, but towards the end of the agenda. Okay? Unless lightning strikes and we get a breakthrough, then we can always add time certain later.
So why, why is it on the next agenda, for what purpose?
Because I have to wait to hear back on the problems that we are having with, on the sanctions.
If it's at the end of the agenda, as I understand, it gives the mayor a chance to give us a status report.
Yes.
But we're not putting a time certain, we're putting it up front, so we don't jam the rest of schedule.
So we'll put it the last item on the agenda, and we might continue.
And it's not a second reading, it's a, it's a-
Still a first reading. Right.
Thank you for the process.
Thank you. Appreciate all your great work. Thanks for the amendments. Deal points, all right. So Dunn, can you please read the title and call the vote for item 1391?
Amend the business license law to increase the owner's compensation deduction maximum for the 2013 tax year. Leonard?
Aye.
Fritz?
Glad we're making the increase that we can, I'm committed to continuing until we fulfill our promise. Aye.
Please co-sponsor this, and Mayor Adams, the money at issue is the result of a tax amnesty plan that you proposed, that brought in about a million dollars, and a portion of that is now being plowed into increasing the business owner's compensation deduction by $2,000. It gets it to $90,500. It is, I think, heading in the right direction. The council's made a commitment to get it to, I think, about 125. But most importantly, it is the kind of targeted tax relief geared to small businesses that allows them to, in 2013, potentially reinvest in their businesses, expand their payroll, find other ways of contributing to success and, and help the local economy. And I think it's, it puts us, it's another step in the right direction, and I'm pleased to support it. Thank you. Aye.
Adams?
It is a, a small but important step. I think it returns to businesses, what, 600,000? How much was it? Andrew?
Talking to you.
My big giant head on the screen scares you, and you, okay. What, I think it's about 600,000 total. All right, vote aye. Can you please read items 1393 and 1394?
1393-
Oh, I'm sorry, one at a time. 1393.
1393, transmit fiscal year 2013-14 general fund five-year financial forecast.
All right, what are we looking at?
I just want to make a few opening comments before turning it over to both Josh and Andrew Jack Graham, Chief Administration Officer for the city. During the work session, we had gave you some preliminary information regarding the forecasts, and at the time we had looked at it, there was a deficit that we need to fill, about $24.4 million, $24.5 million. Josh is going to go through some of those changes that has occurred since that, that time. Nothing major significant of those changes, but we're still facing some major challenges as we look through the forecasts, and a lot of the factors that we explained to you the last time are still prevalent at this time. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Josh.
All right, thanks, Jack. For the record, Josh Howard, City Economist for City Portland. As you can see in the document in front of you, we're looking at about $25 million in ongoing costs to match ongoing revenue with ongoing expenses for the next five years. Almost all of that deficit can be attributed to the three things we've already talked to you about, which are the budget notes, the library levy, the impact we have on property taxes, and the Department of Justice report, and the expenses associated with it conforming to that. The other changes to the forecast generally cancel, cancel each other out. Property taxes are down a little bit further still. Business license tax, that forecast, we altered just slightly down. Transient lodging is up. State shared revenues are up. Turns out, raising liquor prices in Washington means that people cross the border and buy them in Oregon, and that helps us out. And so, so that's, that's the general gist of what we're looking at. We do not have any one-time in the forecast as of right now, however, should the pending intergovernmental agreement with the county go through regarding the Southwood Bridge and delaying the bonding on that, we will see some one-time in the forecast resulting from that. Other than that, you know, we do have some broad risks that, that we're looking at that are relatively near-term. Most notably are labor contracts that are up for negotiation by the end of this, this fiscal year. Pretty much every major contract is, is going to be open, with the exception of the FIRE contract, which was just recently ratified. I know you've been here for a long time, so I won't take up too much more of your time. The other, the other major difference that we, that we incorporate into this forecast is a different assumption of what the ending balance would be at the end of the year. In the recent, in the most, historically, bureaus have not, have only spent about 97% of their allocated budget, and the rest has fallen to balance. Well, through budget cuts and squeezing the budgets in the last couple of years, last year, that came, that number came up to almost 99%. And so, what we've done, that coupled with, now we're grabbing vacancy savings in the current year, some of which would have fallen to balance, we're lowering the assumption of how much the ending balance will be every year in the forecast, and that impacts how much resources you have every year in the forecast, to the tune of about $4 or $5 million. Finally, I would just like to say this in terms of what we're looking at. Again, most of the deficit we're seeing are attributable to non-economic factors. So we probably shouldn't, and in fact, I would argue shouldn't at all, think that the economy can save us from it. We're in a situation where we're expecting growth in the economy, we're expecting revenue growth. This is very different from three, four years ago, where we were trying to reach for the bottom and fuel out the bottom of, of, of our revenue trough. We will see revenues fall next year, but again, that's because of the library levy, that's not a function of a depressed economy. So with that, I'm happy to delve into more specifics and answer any questions.
I appreciate the briefing that I got prior to council meeting. I also appreciate the, the point that you made that, that 90-something percent of the ongoing hole that, that we have to deal with in the next fiscal year was a function of either the library district, the Department of Justice settlement, and the budget notes. So these are non-economic factors, and somewhat unforeseeable, I would, I think, in fairness, but it's the hand we're dealt. So thank you.
Any other discussion from council? Does anyone wish to testify on this matter? Is this a report, what is this? Resolution?
It's a report.
Report, I move to accept the report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Carla, can you please call the vote on the motion to accept the report?
Leonard?
Aye.
Fritz?
Thank you for all your work. Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Adams?
Aye.
So approved. Can you please read the title for item number 1394?
Capital Improvement Plan Task Force One-Year Status Update Report to Council.
This is a very quick update, we will do in about 60 seconds, but Lisa Shaw has been our head on improving the capital reporting for the city.
Hi, I'm Lisa Shaw with Financial Planning. As part of the 1112 adopted budget, council directed FPD to work with a group of citizens and Infrastructure Bureau employees to improve the transparency of the budget document and the process around CIP or capital improvement projects. We met last year, and the, the task force put together a report which we submitted to you. They had six recommendations, and then they asked to meet again one year later, so we met in October. They wanted to review what had been implemented and if they were supportive of the results. Very briefly, the recommendations included having a project threshold of $500,000 so that there were not as many large roll-up projects, creating summary table of inter-bureau projects, flagging new projects, including revenue sources and original budget costs as well as updated budget costs. And there were a few others as well. All of our recommendations were either, were either implemented for this last adopted budget or are in progress and will be implemented in time for the 1314 adopted budget. The task force was very pleased with the progress so far, and they wished to reiterate their support, and they continue to strive for increased transparency and clarity in the CIP process. They asked for council's continued support for the recommendations, and they wish to continue to provide input over the next year. FPD intends to brief the mayor-elect and commissioner-elect after they've taken office, and the council report before you, it consists of just a two-page memo of the update and then the original report.
Discussion with council? Does anyone wish to testify on item number 1394?
No one signed up.
Accept the report?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Carla, can you please call the vote?
Leonard?
Aye.
Fritz?
Please thank the task force for their report and ask them to continue their work. Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Adams?
Aye. So approved. Can you please read the title for resolution item number 1400?
Suspend System Development Charges for Parks and Recreation, Environmental Services, Transportation, and Water for the Construction of Accessory Dwelling Units or the Conversion of Structures to Accessory Dwelling Units Until July 31, 2016.
Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Mayor. Matt Graham with Commissioner Dan Salzman's office. It's a pleasure to, on his behalf, to bring this resolution forward. We had a very similar resolution, exactly the same resolution, actually, just a few years ago, and it has worked incredibly well. Basically, first fiscal, the fiscal year 2008, 2009, when this program was not in place, the Bureau of Development Services permitted 31 accessory dwelling units, and then the first full year that the program was in place, they permitted 70 accessory dwelling units. And actually, for the first time ever last year, they hit the three-digit mark with 104 accessory dwelling units permitted.
That's awesome.
So it is actually working exceedingly well, and this will extend it for another three years, and urge your support.
Can you do, what was it, do you know what the number was before we did this, did you say?
Yeah, so basically, and he can give you the average, too. So before we did this, we had 31 in fiscal year 2008, 2009, that was 2.6 a month, and then last year, we hit 104, and that's 8.7 per month, and actually, this year, we're on track at 12.8 per month. So we'll probably, you know, hit around 130 this year.
That's awesome, good work.
Hey, Matt, since you're here, and, you know, Brendan always tries to steal your thunder, it's nice to see you get the credit you deserve.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
And take, take a bow. This, this came up a couple of years ago, we were talking about the trade-offs and why, could you just give us like a 30-second primer on what, why you think this is strongly in the public interest, and what, what's the benefit?
Well, as you know, as a council, you have many goals, and many policies we put in place, and obviously, creating a dense, livable environment, good use of land, keeping our urban growth boundary strong, this really supports all of that. We also are learning with, with the economy, the cost of utilities, the cost of lifestyles are changing. People are looking actually more and more at smaller footprints, smaller homes, becoming kind of a micro-home movement. There was actually a conference at PSU just about a month ago on this, and it was well-attended, and more and more people are really looking at this as a, kind of a niche market that's growing. So for all those, it's really shown it's a good policy and needs to continue.
And that notwithstanding, no matter your age or station in life, you never know, you might need one of these accessory dwelling units.
True enough, true enough.
And, and there was, there was rampant-
Haven't been living in a garage.
That's right.
And the other benefit that you alluded to is that previously, there was sort of rampant non-compliance with the law, and now we have people taking out permits, we have a ability to make sure that the work is done safely and to code, and that's another advantage for us.
Absolutely, good point, good point.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone wish to testify on this matter?
Yes, we had one person sign up, Eli Speedback.
Mr. Speedback, thanks for your patience today with our agenda going way beyond-
That's understandable, okay. So, thank you, guys, I was here three years ago, and I'm excited you're taking this on right now. Just a couple of notes, I won't repeat what Matt's already said. I won't repeat what Matt's already said. I think that Portland is real leader in this. That summit a month ago, over 300 people attended from regionally, and they were excited by Portland's leadership on this. Eugene is working on doing an SDC waiver like this for their accessory dwelling unit code, and a lot of people are looking to Portland for this. I think that in a city where we have a lot of forms of infill density that are not appreciated, it's in the little skinny homes or big, huge, bulking things, accessory dwelling units are really palatable. And so, I hope that the city continues to encourage the kind of infill that people are happy to support. I think that as the city goes through its comp plan process, I hope that we can bring forth more ways to encourage people to build smaller homes, and there are a lot of good ideas on that, and I hope those will get to the city council. And lastly, I'll say, I hope that during this waiver period, the city can look seriously at indirect staff to investigate this, to make system development charges scale based on house size. Currently, you pay the same SDCs on a 1,000-square-foot house as you pay on a 5,000-square-foot house. I think that, long-term, I know that other cities are starting to look at this also. For a fairness perspective, there should be some scaling, not that you'd pay five times more than, you know, but something like that. And in the interim, though, I'm excited that this measure looks likely to pass, and thank you very much for supporting it.
All right. Carly, can you please call the vote on item 1400, resolution?
Leonard?
Aye.
Fritz?
Well, thanks to Matt Grum for bringing the report. It's important when we do tax measures to look back and see, did it work? Did it work as intended, and indeed, this has? And so, even 130 new units in the city is not that many, and we want people to know that this assistance development charge waiver is in place, that it can make development much more affordable. When Dr. Mark Bello of the Bureau of Development Services did the initial survey regarding how many accessory dwelling units we have in our neighborhoods, at least a decade ago, I would think, I didn't even know whether ones in my neighborhood were there. So, well done, which I take some pride in, because I was part of the development of the standards while on the planning commission. So, it's good to see something that government has done that is working well for developers, for construction workers, for citizens and residences, and as well as for us getting more things done. Aye.
Fish?
Randy, I think, first brought this forward, and Dan is continuing it, and I think it's a good policy. And to Eli's point that you made, you know, the council did change SDCs for the single-family developer so that you didn't have to pay them upfront. You could defer them and pay them at the point of sale. Parks Bureau is just launching an SDC review, which we do every, I think, five years or something, and there's some, lots of ideas about how our fee system might be more tailored, and love for you to weigh in during that. And the mayor-elect was pretty vocal during the campaign about wanting to look at SDCs more broadly. So, I think there'll be an opportunity to look at some of those questions, including whether it should be scaled to the size of the home. This is good policy, and please just support it. Aye.
Adams?
Great leadership, Commissioner Randy Leonard, and great follow-on ship and promotion of the policies to Commissioner Saltzman and his team. Thank you very much. Aye. Can you please read the title for item number 1401?
Replace the Sewer User Charges Code for Consistency of Definitions, Clarification of Terms, and Addition of Enforcement Measures.
Who is here to, Amy? Did the bureau staff just get up? They were tired of waiting.
Hi, Mayor Commissioners. I'm Amy Truitt, Dan Saltzman's office. BES worked with the city attorney's office to do these code changes. It's basically a housekeeping ordinance where we cleaned up a lot of language, updated some parts of the code.
Great.
Questions?
Yes.
The only underline I have in my document is the definition of slug load, which I found very interesting, but I've been wondering before the second reading next week if I could get an underlined redline copy to find out what the changes are. And I don't know if we need a resolution to say that we should do that as a matter of course, or if the city auditor could just always ask for an underlined strikeout copy when we have especially complex changes like the housekeeping, but I don't know which of them are.
Sure, we can get the revisions for you, and then the definition of slug load as well.
Okay. Does anyone wish to testify on this matter? All right. Moves to further consideration next week. Can you please read the title for non-emergency ordinance, 1402?
Authorize Grant Agreement with Friends of Zanger Farm to Support the Bureau of Environmental Services' Mission of Providing Environmental Education and Promoting Environmental Stewardship.
Mr. Truitt.
Zanger Farm is in the Lance neighborhood, very well-known organization. It sits on nine acres that it leases from the city, and Friends of Zanger Farm is the nonprofit arm. They operate a sustainable urban agriculture farm that promotes environmental education and stewardship, and they've been longtime partners with BES. So, this ordinance authorizes grants from the city of up to $10,000 a year for three years to support their education and environmental stewardship programs.
Discussion with council. Does anyone wish to testify on this matter?
No one signed up.
Moves to further consideration in city council next week. We're in recess until more matter.
Pulled item.
Oh, sorry, pulled item.
Okay. 1390. Certify Abstract of Votes Cast, Proclaimed Candidates Elected, and Measure Approved at the Municipal Nonpartisan General Election Held in the City of Portland on November 6, 2012.
Is the person who pulled it in the room?
We have three people who want to testify.
Oh, okay, great.
Nancy Newell, Catherine Lambert-Holstein, and Rosemarie Op.
Thanks for your perseverance. Been a long day.
Long day, Robert. Up and down. Thank you very much.
Who would like to begin?
I'll start when I situate myself.
Again, state your name, and if you're representing yourself or somebody else.
Breathe for a second. Catherine Lambert-Holstein. We are concerned with the election certification today of the mayoral candidate-elect. Charlie Hales was not legally qualified voter when he filed an application for that position. Therefore, he was not legally qualified candidate and should not be certified today. Hales has called this ridiculous. When he moved to Washington, he was not in the military, nor was he in college. His job did not require him to change residency, nor did he move away to give assistance to an elderly family member, friend, relative. There are no special circumstances in his case. If one moves from apartment 10 to apartment 15, one has to update the registration or re-register. That is a requirement. Right here on, we all got the voter's pamphlet recently, right here on page M3, each time you move, you must update your registration. They've made it easier, because now we can do it on computers, except me, I'm still a Luddite, but, you know, most of the rest, you can do that. I signed up this morning as Catherine, my legal name, because I wanted to make a point. If I signed my ballot envelope cherry, which is a nickname that I've had since I've been three days old, my ballot would not be legal, therefore, my vote would not be counted. It's that simple. There are election laws, and either these laws apply to all of us, or, we ask, are some people above the law? Knowing that you are a lawmaking body who frequently pass laws that we all must adhere to, may we assume that you will not place Charlie Hales above the law? I was, I'm always screwed until last minute, and just let me make one quick point, if I still have some time. During the HUAC, House American Activities Committee, and the Joseph McCarthy abominable hearings and all, Archibald McLeish, I believe he was editor of Harper's Magazine at that time, early '50s, and he said very simply, "The true test of democracy is in its use. There is no other test." Please use that today. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi. My name is Rosemarie Op. There has been a letter submitted from several residents into the record who have been concerned about any certification of this November 6, 2012 election. The letter has been put into the record along with a complaint that was filed by A. Seth Ellen Woolley that alleges that Charlie Hales was unlawfully registered and therefore not qualified to have been on the ballot as a candidate for the mayor of the city of Portland. The complainant alleges that Charles Hales, one, unlawfully voted in Oregon several times since the beginning of 2004, two, unlawfully registered to vote in Oregon in 2008, three, made false swearings on his voter registration card filed in March 18 of 2008, four, made false swearings in signing each of his vote-by-mail envelopes submitted in Oregon since the beginning of 2004, and five, violated the Portland City Code 2.08.050 and Portland City Charter 2-202, and is not legally qualified to be a candidate for the mayor of Portland or to serve in that office. That document has been, the 18-page document, has been put into the record. Our recently-elected Attorney General, Ellen Rosenblum, has stated, "The integrity of Oregon elections is of paramount importance. This is about our very important election process and the integrity of our 2012 election. We insist that these allegations that Mr. Hales was not legally qualified when he filled out the mayoral application to be investigated before certification process continues. The confidence that Oregonians have in their elections is important, and this matter and the law cannot be brushed aside." Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Nancy Newell. I'm in full support of all the testimony in Seth Woolley's filing. The Secretary of State has sat on this for about two and a half months, so there will be further action. But I would request that the city auditor, under the guidance of city council, seriously address this issue, because you, as designated elected city council members, should follow the charter, city charter code, and assure the public that every fair process that people live by every day in this city, over a million people, it should be required of someone that runs for office in our city. And that's why I'm here today, to ask you that you ask for a full review, a legal review. There are several recourses we have to pursue this, but why waste taxpayer money in removing someone from office that potentially legally could be removed from office? I can't see going ahead today with your vote on certification. And I'll just give you an example. My mother was city treasurer. She got $75 a month, and a very ambitious city manager replaced her, and they eliminated her job, and he embezzled over $2 million in our small town in one year. So, they brought her back at $75 a month, and she straightened out the books and everything got rolling again. So, I'm here in her honor. That was my mother, city treasurer of Wiper Lake. So, we're your watch people. You set up city charter codes, you set up different agencies to oversee your responsibilities so that there is double checkmate for the public to be protected while they're working sometimes 60 hours a week just to keep servicing the city with taxes and fees. And the least you could do today is honor the letter of the law that has been created by the city and withhold this certification. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. You can return to your seats. Commissioner?
Mayor Adams, I just want to maybe engage the city attorney for a moment, because I just want to make sure I understand how this comes. So, thank you, ladies, for your testimony. The matter before us is an ordinance to certify the election results, and in effect, we're being asked to take the abstract of votes cast furnished to us by Multnomah County Director of Elections and just adopt it. So, that's a ministerial function, and we're just simply accepting that report that demonstrates that Charlie Hales received the most votes of the candidates for mayor, and Commissioner Fritz received the most votes for the other position, and then has other vote tallies. So, my understanding is that if someone raises a question about whether someone, a candidate, has the legal authority to run for that office, that question gets decided by either the Secretary of State or by Multnomah County Elections, not by the city council, and I ask for your guidance.
So, can I object to this as a leading question? First off, for clarification, you referred to this as an ordinance. It's not.
It's a report.
It's a report from the auditor's office, and it's a transmittal of the certification provided to the city elections officer by the county elections office. So, the process that is being followed here is that the council is acknowledging the outcome of this, and it's entered into the city's official records as to what the election outcome was. This is merely a tally of the votes, and the determination as to the qualifications for office are, as you identified, made either by, well, the charter has a provision addressing it, and then as to whether or not a person is properly a registered voter, there are other elected offices that have that responsibility. I'd also note that the city charter provision, which I've got up here, identifies that if an officer is elected without qualification, then they shall, the office shall immediately become vacant. So, the structure of that language identifies that that takes place even though somebody may have been voted in, if there's later subsequent determination that they were not a registered voter at the time, then they are immediately disqualified, and it does not identify any role for the council in that process.
So, just so I'm clear, today, we're being asked to do a ministerial act, which is to accept a report that has the vote tally, and we've not, we've not heard any testimony that the vote, that is, that the vote tally before us is defective. Now, but the related question that the folks have raised in their testimony is, they're not convinced Mr. Hales was qualified to run for mayor, and that question has been put, I think, to the Secretary of State and Multnomah County Elections. Ultimately, we're bound by whatever ruling they make on that, but nothing we're doing today precludes them from pursuing those claims, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a further question. Is it appropriate for me to vote on it, considering I'm in it?
In terms of the acceptance of the certification, yes, there's no problems with you voting on it.
So, to be clear, if the charter has provisions in terms of residence, is it, are you saying that the county enforces that provision?
The provision relates to being a registered voter as well as residency, and so, it's the registered voter aspect of it.
Goes back to the county and the Secretary of State. And I thought the Secretary of State had ruled on the complaint.
I would have to defer to you on that. I'm not familiar with.
Well, it seems to me there was a ruling, but it could also be appealed, or it could be challenged.
It looks like you want to say something, so if you could come up. You have to sit, you have to tell us who you are.
Sure.
And then, you, speaking to that microphone, please.
I'm the city elections officer, Deborah Scroggen, mayor.
What was your name again?
Deborah Scroggen.
Great.
We did receive a complaint back in April regarding Commissioner or mayor-elect Hales' residency and voter registration, and it was investigated by the elections officer then, and determined by the county elections division that he was a registered voter at the time he filed.
Okay.
That's what we've done.
And is there another avenue with the Secretary of State?
I am not aware if there is.
I thought that had happened and been resolved.
But it's not with us.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Unless there's anyone else.
By the way, just so you're there, I'll ask you this question. By us accepting this report, we don't, that does not impact the right of any citizen to collaterally challenge Mr. Hales' qualifications, correct?
No.
Thank you.
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
All right. Unless there's additional discussion, anyone else that wishes to testify? You can only testify once unless council asks you a question. Carly, would you, it's a report, right?
Yes.
So, move acceptance? Second? It's been moved and seconded. Carly, can you please call the vote on the motion?
Leonard?
Aye.
Fritz?
Clearly, others will investigate the concerns raised, and I do appreciate the citizens staying all morning. I will take advantage of this opportunity to thank the 140,443 people who voted for me, and I'm very happy that I won by 46,046 votes. Very much looking forward to continuing to service this people of Portland. Aye.
Fish?
Congratulations to Charlie Hales and Amanda Fritz.
Aye.
Adams?
Aye. So, approved. We're in recess, and we're going to start at 2:10.
Aye.
Aye.
Taking executive prerogative.